But I would like to call the meeting to order. Given that, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Liz, do you want to roll call?
Kathy Jason, here. Liz Curry. Linda Del Duca. Jill Evans. Rebecca Brim. Patrick Calladay.
Here.
Greg Jenkins.
Here.
Erin Cramichmel.
Here.
Alan Matson.
Here.
Bernie O'Rourke.
Here.
Keith Hillsberrys.
Here.
Miriam Stoll.
Here.
Ben Truman. Meredith Woodward King. Xander Long.
Here.
Henry Klein.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda? Moved by Erin, seconded by Rebecca. Are there any amendments to the Agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have an Agenda. Next item on the Agenda is Public Comment. This is a time at which the members of the public are invited and welcome and encouraged to speak before the Board on any issue. It's not a time that the Board will engage in public debate, but it is a time for us to receive input on any particular issue. In general, we typically ask to keep limited your comments to three minutes. We don't end up having a timer, but if the comments, you know, if comments are being extended, I will ask for you to, for you to close up so that we can get a chance for everybody who wishes to speak this evening to speak before the Board. So, all that being said, I will read the list from the sign up. If other people, they'd like to sign up, the list is over there. Likewise, at the end, if you haven't signed up, but you still feel you'd like to say something, you're still encouraged. You don't need to write down your name right to sign up, but I would say just please introduce yourself as, as you come forward here to the mic. Thank you. So, the first names on the list are Son Do and Mohammed Mukhtar, and third is Leandra Waldo Johnson. Right there, yeah, perfect.
Thank you. I thought I have half an hour, but it's 10 minutes. Boy, I try my best.
Come, if you come on another night, we'll give you a half hour.
So I might be talking to you later, okay. So my name is Son. I am the multilingual liaison for Burlington School District. I have three children, in 12th grade, and 8th grade, and 7th grade, S B S D too. So I'm represent for, speak for myself and for my community too, and also for my position too. I just want to talk about my experience about as the refugees, the new American. So early since 1980, we, the Vietnamese community moved to USA, and we live along with Washington State. So that's early 80s, we don't have the EOL program on that time. So they put every refugee in the mainstream class. Boy, I feel like, in our community, feel like we throw in the ocean, and they go ahead and try to swim by yourself. And we try, but we don't know what direction to swim, you know, because it's so new to us, and we have no liaison to help us, we have no EOL program to help us out. So within one and a half year, we go nowhere. We're not improving anything. We, we are depressed, our community depressed, and we long, we thirsty for the, for the people who speak our own language, or someone who's, on that time, we don't know EOL program yet. So on that time, we struggle, we, we looking for something, for basic, to help up, to never, navigate us to that direction, but. So one and a half year, we, our community struggle, my family struggle. We heard in California, they have EOL program, they call, at that time, they call ESL, in Boston. So on that time, we heard that. So most of our community moved to California and Boston. That's why we see a lot Vietnamese live in California now, in, in Boston. And through that, which when we went to Boston and through the EOL program is, it helped us a lot. And within the year or two year, we know what going on, we know what to do. And most of my brother, my cousin, and our community in doing 21 in school after we go through the EOL program, that's helped us a lot. Then I don't want any, right now, the reason I work at school because of that too. I don't want any student go through this again. It's, to me, it's a nightmare for me, because we don't know how to swim, we don't know how to adapt this culture. We want some basic information and to help us out. So to me, it's the student learning English need more support from our school. Many students have to improve their reading and writing math skill too. And sometime, a school assume us to know English, but my, my children went, born here, but they go through, they went through the EOL program, and hope a lot for my family too. So EOL program is, 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 to, to, to our community is very important for us. And new, especially new American parent need a lot of support as well too. And we need more liaison to help parents to understand the message from school too. Today, a lot of parent came to me and asked me a lot of question, like, what is like pajama days? What is that going on? And they just asked me, they confused. They said, what going on with the school? Those simple stuff, they just keep asking me. What is school pajama day? If there's a school teacher kid how to, we're sleeping at school? You know, they call me, and they, they tried to argue with me, I said, be patient, okay? Let me explain, this is a culture thing, I don't know if it's a culture or not. Even I live here 30 years, I still don't know if that culture or not. I'm still confused. Amazing, a new American, culture thing, sleeping day at school? I, I believe that we burn them out. That topic alone, that's pretty easy, can burn them out already. And we need more reading, writing, math support for student. Sometimes school assume us know grammar right away, but we are not. We have to go through, sometime we have to go to Spanish to learn grammar. Sometime we have to go spare French class to learn grammar. Because in the mainstream, they don't teach no grammar, they assume we know automatic, but we are not. So through EOL program, help us a lot. Teach us step by step how to write grammar, how to write essay, is help a lot too, and help us to navigate to the mainstream. So to me, is, we need more EOL teacher too. We need tutor after school and a summer school for, for the new American too. So we need more liaison to support family, liaison support our multi-family, even those who student more no longer in EOL program.
And I need.
One second?
Yeah, need you to.
Okay, to me is, to me is, the EOL program is very important to our community, to our new Americans. So I think you need to think about that, and support about that idea too. And more to liaison too, we need more people to help me out too. So because I'm suffer a lot, because I take care for the whole district, and it's too many thing I cannot do by myself. So I need more support for our community too. I just want to thank you. Too bad only three minutes, I tried to roll the whole story for 30 minutes, but only three minutes.
Son, thank you. You can grab us on the street and give us the rest. Mohammed Mukhtar. Leandra Waldo Johnson. Robin Berger.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mohammed Mukhtar, and I was the former student right here at PHS. I graduated 2009, and I'm very glad that I'm working for the district right now. And I'm one of the multilingual liaison for Somali and Somali band to community in Burlington District. So today, I'm representing parent, student, community leaders, you know, I'm representing everybody. And what my friend Son do mention, we need more touring, more EOL teachers, more support, and also, we want you, you know, to keep running the summer school program. The reason we choose that, because our EOL student are always behind to be success right here, the education, which is the key of life. So our new American, when they come to America, some of them have known a little bit of English, and some of them don't know anything. So the only way that we catch up, you know, to be successful, the education right here in Burlington School District is EOL teachers and summer school program, and also individual support inside of the class. When I was a student right here in Burlington High School, and I have faced a lot of difficulty understanding, you know, the, especially the language barriers, you know, and also, I had more difficulty for the math and science class. And I didn't have individual support, but I did it my best. And I got two of the parent behind me, sitting all the way back over there. Today, they remind me that, you know, our kids are getting, you know, the, what they needed right now, but not before. So that means, the last couple years, we had, you know, enough support, I can say that. They hired more EOL, and they hired more individual support for our children, and we would like to keep, continue that support for our new American. So, student from elementary to PHS, we always like to be successful and ready to go college. You know, to do that, is the support that is coming from you guys always. So, and most of the other reasons that we are here tonight, Master Son already talked about it, so that's what I would like to add it only, and thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mohammed. Leandra. Robin Berger. And then Tracy Dengler.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the budget, and I'm going to start with the one budget thing that I've seen bandied about as being cut, that I'm actually okay with being cut. In a perfect world, I think we could have an amazing elementary school Spanish program. I don't think, from what my children tell me they're getting right now, which is about 45 minutes a week, and from what Spanish they can recite to me, I don't think that our Spanish program is really doing what we would want a Spanish program to do, so that the money we're spending on the elementary school Spanish program could be spent elsewhere. I have a sixth grader, and so far this year, he hasn't taken Spanish at all. I know that's coming up at some point, and my third grader takes it once a week. But then I want to talk about some of the things that I've seen bandied about as being removed. My, my youngest is right now at one of the magnet schools. My oldest started at Champlain Elementary. And shortly before he started, I believe, and his first year there, is when we were having the social economic integration class discussions in the district. And for those who attended those discussions and saw them discussed in coffee shops and whatever, they were often contentious and horrible, with people saying things about the two Old North End schools, and whether their children should have to go there, and so on. And we were also discussing closing one of those schools. And in the end, we came up, the district came up with the idea of the magnet schools. And as a parent with a child at the magnet schools, I think it is an amazingly successful way to have integrated the district. I think they're full of vibrancy and life, and there's still a lot of challenges in those buildings, but it is a place that you walk into those buildings and you just want to be there, and I have spent time in both buildings. But if we were to take care of the support that they have to do what they're doing, I think they would fail. I think it's a lot to ask an elementary school teacher, please do all the common core stuff you need to do, deal with all the behavior challenges you have in your classroom, deal with the fact that your children leave the room all the time for specials, and while you're at it, please integrate this subject matter as well. And so giving them coaches and other people to help them with that is a vital, a vital piece of their success. The other cut that I wanted to talk about was the paras in the library, and through the three years, three and a little bit years that we've been at IAA, I spent a lot of the time in the library, sometimes volunteering, sometimes having meetings there, and now that I work in the building, going in there when I'm done with work as a, as a safe space. And I think to think that the paras are just checking out books, or, I mean, I don't even know what people's thoughts are, is really misguided. I know that teachers in the building have told me that they totally rely on the para in the library to help them if they have a content area that they need more books for. I've seen students go in there who are well behind their grade level peers. They'll walk in and be shown their level books and told, you know, here you go, you get to take out six again, and given a cheer for all the books they can read. And it's an ongoing process, you know, the librarian will be working with a group of kids, with a whole class, and some kids will walk over to the para and get some attention to the book they need to check out, a question they have. So if we only had one person in there, our libraries in the elementary school could not be the dynamic places that they currently are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Tracy Dengler. And I apologize for not being able to read the handwriting, I think it's Greg Wilson, but I, I think I just totally don't have that right, but I think it's something like that.
My name is Tracy. I have a kindergarten at IAA, and we have been blessed and excited to be a part of that community. We live on the South End, so made it a choice recently to bring her across town. And I, I understand the need, I just want to say, I understand the need to pass a budget, and the question that you're posing to every school, which is, what can you live without? But I wouldn't, I just want to repeat what Robin was saying, that, you know, five years ago, the magnets were almost closed, and Burlington is being cited as a city that people want to live in, and part of that is comments on our schools and the magnets as a choice. It's a, a draw for people, it's, it's what people envisioned it would be, people are choosing to bring their kids there, and it's integrating the school system, and it's raising the standard of education in those schools, and in the entire district. My understanding is that teachers outside of the magnet schools are modeling after some of the teaching methods that are being demonstrated to them by their peers at the magnet schools. I would encourage the Board to consider something that I heard from a recent, I think, board member actually, which is, why can't we make more magnet schools? Why, I, I think I heard recently that J.J. Flynn was doing something with math and science potentially. Why are we not exploring that? There might be some grant opportunities to help support our schools if they all had a focus. I know that it's helped the vision at IAA, and it's helped the community have something to rally around, to have that focus of the arts. It's brought in a lot of community partners and a lot of dynamic energy to the school. And I think cutting some of those coaches and cutting Victor cuts some of that enthusiasm, it cuts that support structure for the teachers. It cuts their ability to find, how do we get continuing education? Where do we look? What is it, what does it look like? What's the direction we should take? That's a lot for the teachers to figure out on their own while they're being asked to meet the common core standards. So I put it to the Board and to the whole community, what other cuts can the district find that don't impact our students on a daily basis? Maybe there's some on the district level, administrative level, maybe there's, you know, there's just, I, I would like to put it to the community to find other solutions than cutting, cutting things that affect our kids on a daily basis. And I think the coats, the coaches of the arts and the Sustainability Academy is, is not really an option that I think should be considered, so. I, I don't really have anything else to say, I guess, I just would encourage you all to, to realize how far the magnets have come, and cutting things like their arts coaches cuts, cuts them off at the knees, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Apologize if, I mean, it's, first name begins with a G, second, it looks like, it looks like Wilson, I just, sorry, can't read it that well. If you feel like you signed up early on and I should be calling your name, come on up, I apologize. If not, and I, and you feel like I've skipped your name, let me know. Next would then would be Ed Wilbur, followed by James Maloney and Betsy Green.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Um, I'm, I'm a retiree, and my income is fairly, is basically flat. Social Security gave me a percent and a half. My, my work pension, I have not had a raise in that in about 15 years, and that was only a half a percent. So you can see, from a retiree standpoint, you can talk about going up 10% year after year after year, okay? I can only keep up maybe a percent and a half a year. I can't sustain this forever and ever. My option is to maybe turn down my heat to 40 degrees, you know, things like that. I think that you have to come up with a, a better business model in terms of how you're running the school system. I do not think that the pension system that's currently set up can be sustainable, or we're going to wind up like Detroit, Michigan. It just can't be sustained. And I, I think we have to do something about that. I think you're going to have to work with the teachers, explain the bottom line to them, and, and work with them. IBM can't afford it, GE can't afford it. I mean, why should, why should us taxpayers think we can afford that kind of thing? It's, it's got to change, folks. Maybe you can look at some of the programs that only have three, four, or five students in them, cut the program, cut the teacher. Any other business would do the same thing. So I, I think you've got to come up with some real creative solutions on how to keep this thing in control. Right now, it's out of control. The percentage just keeps going up and up and up, and us retirees don't have the, the money to continue to support it. How do I feel about education? My daughter went to school here, she got a wonderful education, a wonderful education. The teachers were excellent, so I taught myself in high school for a year, I've recently been teaching at Vermont Tech, I'm, I'm done there now. So I understand what it is to teach, and as one of the ladies here said before, when you're looking at the money, if it goes to the kids, fine. If it goes to administration, other programs, not fine. You've got to, you've got to get down to what, what you're really here for, which is for the kids. And anything else, in my mind, has got to go. Thank you.
Thank you. James Maloney, followed by Betsy Green.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. Can you hear okay? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm going to do anything, but at least it will make me feel better, because I really, see, I came home and read the paper and said a 7.7% increase was proposed, and that's going to raise my property taxes 12%. Since 15 years of Act 60, the school property tax portion of my tax bill has risen at twice, more than twice the rate of my salary increases, and I can't be the only person in the room that's happening to. I know a lot of people's property taxes are limited by their income, and it bothers me that the school board every year promotion sells the, you know, school budget increases by doing that, by saying, most of you don't have to pay for it. So where has 15 years of Act 60 gotten us? We are the second highest expenditure per student in the country, second only to New York State, and we're only about $40 behind them. And that was done by the NEA's review of the National Statistics and Rankings. We are the number one lowest student teacher ratio in the country. So with that, where has that gotten us? You'd think our students would be the brightest and the most, you know, ready to take on the world, and all the results show that we're about average, at best. All right? So I don't know where that's getting us right now. You know, they talked about, we can't cut anymore, and poor Ed, you know, he's trying to figure out where he's to meet ends. Not just businesses, but families have to make these decisions. In order to keep up with the property taxes, I went out and took a second job, all right, and I cannot continue to take the back of 10% increases every year, is driving the value of my house down, because people see that the property taxes, 2.5% of the value of your home. The 7.7%, they said it's general education, and you laid out all the expenses, general education's probably the largest, labor is probably the largest proportion of the tax increase over the school budget. Am I right on that? And majority, I just read in the paper that the school teachers, and there's excellent teachers, maybe they should be the highest paid people in our society, but they got a 3.1, 4.1, and 4.5% over the next three years. And how many people in this board or in this room got those kind of increases? Ed's increases are limited. I, you know, I, I think teachers are great, they have very high paying jobs with fabulous benefits. The retirement, which we are $3 billion behind in this state, continues to be funded, that if you hit 55 and 30 years of experience, you can retire at 50% of your pay. If I stay till I'm 65, I only get a third of my pay, and I make less than a Burlington teacher, and I've got an engineering degree and a master's degree. They always say, well, if we went out in the public, we'd be making twice as much money. That's not true in Vermont. Most of you probably know that. So I don't know how we can give them these kind of increases, and then go to the voters and say, hey, we had to give them this increase, so now you got to raise the budget. You should do it the other way around. You should say, this is what the voters approved, this is all we can afford. And probably like my increase is like 3%. I suggest also that to solve the crisis with the pensions is that people start with a 401K, just like every other private company has done. New employees starting out in my company, get a 401K plan. I think I, I probably could go on 30 minutes like Mr. Lang. These programs are great, you know, that was a great speech he gave about the programs we have, very valuable stuff, English is a second language and the success stories, but we got to say, how much can this, of this stuff can we afford? And I, I can't, I really can't. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, sir.
My name is on, on the list, but I guess.
Go ahead. I, I, I'll just write it in here, because I can't quite read the handwriting, go ahead.
My name is Gary Dionne, I live in Ward, 7.
Okay, I'm sorry, Gary, I, it was a handwriting thing.
No problem. No, basically what two gentlemen just said was what I was going to make comments on. With Obamacare, people are, as we all know, they're losing their health insurance, and they're having to go out and bid out, and that's in a mess. Someone's healthcare plan, again on the news tonight, the employer's plans, they're, they've now admitted, and they're saying that people are going to have to go out and, go out on the market and go look for some new insurance. And it, it's just come to a point now where, you know, and I am also a retiree, and I, the retirement that the firemen get, the police officers get, I don't get anywhere near what they get. And I had 34 years at General Dynamics, so, but with that said, it, to go and go to the polls and have to vote for a 10% increase every time, it needs to stop. We cannot handle it anymore. And also, I do not like the wording on the ballot. When you write it up, you write it so that you, it, it's written so that it's a proposed budget, and it gives the millions of dollars. It doesn't say that you're going to go for a school tax increase. So all the seniors, you know, all the people out there that go in and they get the ballot and they go, oh yeah, school, school budget, well, it's a yes or a no. You guys need to change the way you word the ballot. Put it down there that you're asking for a 10% increase, and make it fair. So with that said, and I, you know, I just want you to take it under consideration, you know, think about the people down the road, and, and the other thing, the fact that we got a 1.5 increase, I would like to know what the salary people, the teachers, and exec people, how much of an increase are they getting? Are they getting a 1.5% increase? Where do they get it? Does anyone know?
I mean, it's in the papers, I mean, it was just mentioned 31, 41, 45, that was mentioned, that is correct numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, but, it's out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Green, Brian Williams, and Anna Telemark, I think it is.
Hi, I'm Betsy Green, back again. I'm Champlain Elementary School and music teacher, also a Burlington resident in the New North End. Um, I just wanted to come back and reiterate a little bit about the cuts in Spanish and how it will have a domino effect in our schools on our other programs, whether, I'm not sure if you are understanding, but several of our schools will not be able to meet the contractual forty-five minute prep time. And I think a teacher might have spoken about that prior to vacation in, in December. Having said that, I've talked with people about different scenarios about how they would meet that. There's two elementary schools who currently couldn't do that. Um, so they would have to restructure the entire schedule, which would have a trickle effect on, of course, the music program, because that would have to be rescheduled. You think that we could add more music time, but you can't. There's no time in our schedule, so that means a, a more creative look at it. And the scenarios that have come from, um, down to me through, um, the Edmonds principal, that she has gone and tried to figure this out with, of course, to be proactive, uh, they all produce cuts to the music program, significant cuts. And so, um, what I'm asking you to, is to think about what those ramifications of, it's easy to say, "Let's do the forty-five minute," but how would that look in each school? And, um, and then how would we meet that? And, and then you would have equity. I know at Champlain that if we added one more class, we can't meet the forty-five minute prep time with the faculty that we have there now, in the time that we have. Also, elementary students are in a developmental music stage. That means our music aptitude is, changes, um, up until age nine, we stable out. So you have the same music aptitude that you have now, as you did as age nine. There's longitudinal studies done by Dr. Gordon, Edwin Gordon, and I can send all that information to you if you're interested. But, he's also known that music instruction has an effect on aptitude. And to cut music instruction means now that we're, we're not even giving them a better chance at doing better as they get older. So even if we maintain the programs we have, um, so I want you to can think about the fuller put picture, if you can, if you haven't been already. And I really appreciate your time and, and effort, and I know this is a very, very difficult job, so thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Brian Williams, Anna Telemark, and Amy Mellencamp.
Thank you, Chairman Madsen, good evening, Superintendent Collins, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Brian Williams, I am a Burlington resident, I am the proud parent of three Burlington students. And, uh, I'd like to take my first opportunity to say thank you to Becca and Erin for your service to the school board, and that we will be holding elections, uh, very soon for your replacement, but thank you very much for your contributions. Is that it? Is it recess? I started out in Burlington as a paraeducator, working for the ELL students twenty-two years ago. I was then an English teacher, I became an interim assistant principal, assistant principal here at Burlington High School, interim principal at the Integrated Arts Academy, interim principal at the Sustainability Academy, and now I'm very happy to report that I am the, uh, full-time principal of the Sustainability Academy. It is an amazing place. My journey has taught me many things, and it's sort of the saying, when I was a child, I thought as a child, well, when I was a paraeducator, I viewed the world through the eyes of a paraeducator. And then as I grew through my career as an English teacher and then as an administrator, I started to realize the incredible complexity that exists in an education system. Whether it's ELL students, whether it's summer school, whether it's Spanish programs, whether it is, uh, special education. There are so many moving pieces that we need to make sure that we keep functioning, that we keep funding, so that all of our students can have the best possible opportunities to be successful. In my twenty-two years in the district, I would say that this is probably, uh, one of the tougher moments that I've seen a school board have to deal with. And I, I don't end you your position, I wish you the best of luck in your deliberations. Uh, at our school, we, we focus on, on the students. And I believe that all of our schools focus intently on the students. And making sure that we meet students where they're at, and we get them to where they need to be. And I feel that our efforts are organized, I feel they're coordinated, and I feel that they're having tremendous success. I would also say that from the magnet school perspective, uh, we're seeing something really exciting, which national news organizations and scholars and visiting superintendents are, are very eager to learn more about. And I think it's a national model that we need to make sure that we, that we support. And I also agree with magnet schools and the other, uh, elementary schools, I think it's a very exciting development. My final comments are, uh, in the words of my friend Aunt Tewksbury Fryhugh, could not be here tonight. Uh, she's the sustainability coach at the Sustainability Academy, and she says, "For the past ten to twelve years, Burlington has wrestled with the issues of equity, serving all children and providing the best education possible to every child, not just those with means, to commit our resources to the least able among us and those who test the poorest, as well as those who flourish with huge familial systems in place. After years of meeting with task force, community input, and hundreds of hours, the board-appointed tasks came up with the promise of socioeconomic integration. Thus the magnet schools were born, an opportunity for all of Burlington's children to have a choice. Our board and superintendent have supported these best practices through these two schools who offer an exciting approach to curriculum and enriching students' lives. Let us support the coaching positions at these new schools rather than eliminate them. Let us step into the twenty-first century by making our community rich with yet more magnet schools, rather than stripping away the excellence the two we presently have. Coaches provide the backbone of teacher-student and curriculum support to schools, coaches provide the link for learning and excellence. Let us step up and forward, bringing more schools into becoming a magnet. Let us continue to help Burlington to address all issues of diversity and celebrate our unique, our uniqueness. Now is the time." And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Anna Telemark, Amy Mellencamp, followed by Graham Lambert.
Nobody ever pronounces my last name correctly, so, they usually get the Thelamark in there. So, and I knew Brian was gonna end up behind you, and you're gonna be animated, and I'm gonna be really dull and flat, and I'm gonna read off of this paper, but I have an important message. My name is Anna Telemark, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the magnet school positions. First, however, I want to thank you for your time and your continued support of the magnet schools. The support has served to improve the educational experiences of so many Burlington children. It has also brought regional and statewide attention to the school district in the city. A great part of their success is deeply rooted in the positions of magnet school coordinator and magnet school coaches. The creation of the magnet schools emerged from a district-wide conversation and decision. It emerged as a solution that met the needs of socioeconomic integration, a better representation of diversity throughout the district, and it allowed all of the district families the same opportunities of school choice. Through hard work and a focus on arts and sustainability, the schools have successfully drawn the community towards its goal. But the past four years have been hard work for staff and families alike at the magnet schools. There have been numerous hurdles along the way, but families and staff have remained strongly committed to a shared vision. We are just now getting on our feet. To eliminate just one of these essential positions would be to steal back all of the promises made to an entire community just a few years ago. So I urge you, as you consider how to best serve the district's children and the educational health of an entire community, that you continue to support the magnet school initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Amy Mellencamp, Graham Lambert, Eric Shems.
Good evening, my name is Amy Mellencamp, principal here at Burlington High School and a Burlington resident. Um, I'm, um, here to talk about the, um, physical space at Burlington High School. This is an exciting time of year for us, because we're starting the transition process with eighth grade students and their families. We've, um, had some initial meetings already, and I've been meeting with some parents individually, doing some tours, and doing some, some meetings as we've gotten started with that process. And it's been interesting to me, some of the questions that have come up, and some of the concerns that have come up the last couple of weeks as we've moved around the building. And so I think it's an opportunity, uh, to reassure people that we have begun a plan in addressing some of the concerns that have been pretty markedly brought to my attention. Some of the issues relate to the physical challenges of moving around this building. Uh, we had a, a group this summer, um, I know several of you were here, Mary, I think you helped, uh, set that up, that, uh, really helped us to start thinking about some of the challenges of, of some of our students, and we have a number of them transitioning that this coming year, and really making use of, uh, and accessing the space fully throughout the school. So, um, as, as I've been handling some of those questions, I think it's important to note, uh, to those of, um, many other parents who may have some concerns, that we are beginning to address those issues, we're taking them very seriously. We're hoping that they're not just temporary solutions, but we're working towards some long-term solutions that will really benefit the whole, uh, school. I've also been fielding a couple of questions related to security and how we're really approaching the layout of our school. Um, it's been interesting to me that some of those questions have been coming up. And again, I really wanna be able to reassure people that those issues are front and center as we're looking at how we are wanting to, um, make sure that our students are well-served in this building and addressing some of those issues. Uh, this past week, uh, we had some issues related to the infrastructure, some major leaks and some different things. Yes, our building has been tired, we had a major sewage breakdown, but we're trying to stay on top of those things as much as possible and address them. Uh, and, especially for those of you who were at the, the game on Saturday, we are addressing some of those issues that really came up, um, through the, the leaks that came into the building. I, I did want to, um, also address the fact that, um, some parents seem to be aware of the whole accreditation process. Um, had one question about that last week. We are in the process of, in two thousand sixteen, every ten years, the high school has to be reaccredited. The whole building issue is, um, one that we have been, um, noted as deficient on, and so that they are tracking us right now. But again, I just wanna reassure people, and I wanna thank the board for your, your, um, support in helping us to start addressing these issues and really assure parents that we are providing the safest and the most welcoming, um, facility possible with all students being able to access our services. So thank you for that support, and, um, and we look forward to having eighth grade parents, uh, join us on January thirtieth. I'm gonna put a plug in for that, that's our orientation night. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Graham Lambert, Eric Shems, and Meg Klein.
Hello and good evening, uh, my name's Graham Lambert. I am a recent hire to Edmonds Middle School as the band director. I was hired last year. Um, during my hiring, um, it was brought up constantly, um, the idea of diversity and equity within the school district, and specifically how I would create that in the band. Um, in a band, you're asked to play an instrument, which is a physical object that you have to, um, supply. We have a limited number of instruments at the school, most of which are out of order. So, our options are, uh, to rent and to, um, have parents buy them. So, we are asking parents to pay fifteen to forty-five dollars a month, uh, to rent an instrument, or to purchase one upwards of five hundred dollars and plus. Um, we are then asking parents, um, to support our students at home. Uh, there's basically three main parts of band, to make it a successful program. The first part is obviously class time, uh, rehearsals in school. The second is lessons, um, where we pull out students from classes on a rotational basis, and what basically breaks down to about five, um, periods between the beginning and the concert, which happened in December. Um, and then home practice. And without either of those three pieces, you start to deconstruct the band program. So, I'm here today to speak on be, or on behalf of, um, my program, my students, and their ability to follow their dreams, follow their interests, in a supportive environment, where they are shown that they are not just here to learn what is mandated, but they are also here to be expressive and humanistic in their approach to life. So, specifically, um, through my research, I found that there's a possible cut in music lessons during the school day. And while I cannot find specifics on what this means, so I would like to spec, uh, I come here tonight then to talk and ask you to consider the importance of band lessons within the school day. This is a time when I work with a clarinet section, or a trumpet section, a specific group, on a grade level. So they're at a specific level. Um, without this time, I end up in a situation, and my students end up in a situation, where they're in a class with forty to fifty kids, students, of different instruments, different abilities, and I have to work with one group of students, leaving a multitude unable to actually participate in the music. So, with lessons, we bolster and support our students actually experiencing instrumental music. We support them, um, by saying, "Here's some time when you can come work with someone who you know, someone who is consistently there, someone who's been there when your sister, your brother, possibly even your mother, father, were there. And you can take lessons with them and follow their footsteps." So, without lessons, we end up deconstructing the band program. We take our already, um, middle-level program and say, "Alright, we need to reduce the challenge of music, because now we have less instruction time." Um, and we also say, "If you can't support yourself with lessons," because there will be a need to supplement your abilities, or supplement your time, or, to supplement your education with outside lessons, which are at a cost of about, um, forty to fifty dollars per session, um, which is enormous, but that's what it goes for. We are discluding students of socioeconomic disadvantage. Um, so, being hired to create a more equitable band program, I need the support to do such a thing. And that support includes instructional time, includes lessons, and includes my community's support. And I can tell you, from communicating with my parents, I have their support in developing the band program and their child's dreams. So thank you for my time, good luck with your, uh, with your process, and I appreciate being here tonight. Good night.
Thank you, Graham. Eric Shems, Meg Klein, followed by Richard Hilliard.
Good evening, my name is Eric Shems, I'm the design and technology teacher at Edmonds Middle School. I'm also the team leader for the exploratory team, which means that, you know, I'm in charge of the department head for the music program, for the foreign language program, for my own program, for the PE department, for the art program, and for the healthy living program. And I hope, uh, tonight will dispel a few rumors of, uh, small classes. At, at Edmonds Middle School, we're bursting at the seams. As a team leader, I'm very proud to say that we have tremendous course offerings for kids. We have a very strong performance music program that our kids access, and I would be a real shame to start taking some of these opportunities away from our kids. I think it's one of the highlights of their day at school. It's certainly what they talk about, um, as being their favorite things to do. Music was a very important part of my life growing up, I was a trombone player in middle school and high school. And I would really hate to, uh, to see this, this great work that's being done go away. The young man that you saw before me, Mr. Lambert, who's a teacher on my team, um, is very talented. And as you guys know, people are programs, and to start losing people of his caliber would certainly be a shame and a, and a disservice to our students. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Meg Klein, Richard Hilliard, and then Amy Cudney.
Good evening. Thank you all for your service and your time, and all of you folks for coming out. I wanna lift up how amazing I think the Burlington School District is doing. I think we're in a time of real visioning and change. I'm so excited, as I was, to see the magnet schools in five or ten years and where they are now. Where are our high schools, where are our middle schools, where are the elementary schools are gonna be in ten years? Um, I spent some time online, um, and saw happily that one of the board goals is community engagement. And, and I'm curious about how that was meant. Does that mean you're gonna engage with the public, is that the district, are you gonna support that in the district? I think that coming up into the transitions and changes that are happening, to cut the people that are, are tasked with engaging the community, with creating understanding and energy, is a mistake, it's a real mistake. It pays great dividends when our families are engaged and understand and welcomed, when the time and energy and money- when the time and energy and money is put into making a community in our schools. I urge you to support both the multilingual liaisons. The information that came out of the communication survey that was recently done clearly and strongly said what an asset they are to our schools. And I wish we had liaison liaisons. But to think about cutting the community engagement, when I see, my son is here tonight, and in his school, you know, seven, eight hundred people came out for our community dinner. You know, people were rubbing elbows. They don't have a chance to talk. Information was getting exchanged. You know, the school had a forum in a warm way to inform families. And that wouldn't have happened without that position at hand. So, thank you all for your time, and good luck.
Thank you, Meg. Richard Hilliard, Amy Cudney, Shannon Walters.
Thanks very much. My name's Richard Hilliard. I live in Ward One. I just want to say, I think I've spoken to every one of these now for the last couple of months, so you're seconded to hearing me. So, I'll do a slightly different spin. And I'd just like to challenge the school board, the school commissioners, to think about how we can avoid these sort of conversations in the future. Challenge yourself to establish some metrics regarding the finances of the school district, some of the outcomes that you want. It may be on the sports program. It may be the number of children in a certain class, whatever it is. But challenge yourself so that you can measure them, and you can try to anticipate how we can get away from this ridiculous situation we're in every year, talking about half a custodian here, half a para there, and a couple of cuts in the libraries. It is ludicrous, and I would ask the school board all to take that on, and let's get some transparency to the program. If you have some metrics that you demand from the school district, review them every single month. How are we doing? What are the variances? How can we make sure that we don't sit around a table on the fourteenth of January two thousand and fifteen, talking about an elementary Spanish program or something like that? It is, frankly, it's your challenge. It should be a challenge that you should accept and demand better of the school district. And with that, thank you very much indeed. Were we having any other discussions on the school district or the school budget? You've had enough of me. Thank you very much.
We may have to schedule a couple more. Amy Cudney, Shannon Walters, Stephanie Miller.
Hi. I'm humbled to realize how many passions each of us brings to our little piece of the school district. So, I will admit that I'm just here to speak about one little piece of the puzzle, and as I listen to all the things people are talking about, I'm reminded of what a much bigger picture it's all a part of. But there is an angle that I can speak to, so I would like to share that with you. My name is Amy Cudney, and I am the library paraprofessional at the Integrated Arts Academy at H.O. Wheeler Elementary. This is my fifth year working as the library assistant there. I'm also the parent of a fourth-grade student there and a sixth-grade student at Edmunds Middle School. So, it's really fun to see some of my daughter's teachers come up here, and she really does love exploratory, by the way. It seems silly to disguise the fact that part of the reason I'm here tonight is to advocate for the importance of my job as a library assistant. I hope to do so, however, in a way that demonstrates not only that cutting library services would cost me my job, but also that there would be a cost borne by every one of our students. School libraries are a place to which all students and all their families have access. Every week in the IAA library, I see every single student in the building at least once, and there are some students that I see every day. Though it may sound like a silly detail to focus on, I know all of their names. I also often happen to know what kind of books capture their attention and are accessible to their reading level. So far this year, I have circulated over eleven thousand books. With a number like that, you might be justified in thinking that I spend most of my time re-shelving books, a job that some in the district feel could simply be delegated to a volunteer. It may please you to know, therefore, that I already have quite a few volunteers who help with this endless task, both from the community and from the building. I get help from retirees, grandparents, parents, colleagues with a few extra minutes, and students. Part of my job has been training all of these people to help me. The emphasis, however, should be on the fact that first, the books need to be checked out. First, students need to be encouraged and assisted in finding the books they need and want to read. The fact of the school library, provided it has adequate staffing, is that it is always available to everyone. There are times when the librarian is teaching that I need to ask students to keep their voices quieter, but I do not have to send them away. Were you to cut library services so the library was staffed by only one adult, there would instead be times, sometimes most of the day, that the library would need to be closed, except to the one class of students who were there for their weekly lesson. The two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of resources in the IAA library that we have carefully selected and organized to support student learning and that the taxpayers have funded over the years would not be available at those times. And actually, because my library colleagues and I have the skills to navigate and manage the online catalogs of our books, we can, through our interlibrary loan system, actually give our patrons access to the entire Burlington School District's library collection, a resource valued at between two and a half and three million dollars. That's money that's already been invested. The two-hundred thousand dollars that would be saved by cutting out your library support staff is ridiculously small in comparison to the effect that it has on the availability of such a valuable resource. In Burlington, we are very fortunate to have an amazing public library. It is, however, downtown. If you cannot just hop in the car and dash down there, maybe because you don't have a car, or if your work schedule is restrictive, or if you're just a kid and you're not allowed to go places on your own yet, that resource may not be as available as it looked. School libraries, located right in the building where our students spend most of their days, are a critical piece in our search for student equity. So, really, what I hope I have made more clear is the fact that a cut in library services is not just a loss of personnel. More importantly, a cut in library services deals a real blow to the equity that this district lauds itself for protecting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Shannon Walters, Stephanie Miller, and Marnie Slavik.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Walters, and I've returned to speak to you this week because as a school librarian in Burlington, my job is all about information. My job is about providing access to the students and the staff in my school to the best information, to help them evaluate it for what is effective and what is accurate, and to help them to synthesize it and use it in an effective way. And that information comes in a lot of containers. It can be in print, the eleven thousand items, the twenty, oh, I'm sorry, I should go with the real data. Last year, a hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight items that circulated across the nine school libraries in Burlington, providing equitable and efficient access to those resources, and as Amy mentioned, resources the district has already invested in. When I think about information, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that everybody has the information they need to make good decisions. And over the last week, we have learned that the cuts to the library program are at the library paraprofessional position level. We also learned that many of those decisions for what cuts would be identified were made based on an administrative book study group, looking at smarter budgets, smarter schools. And when we look at that, Nathan Levinson, the author of that book, really speaks to the return on investment and looking at using the best data to make decisions and then spending money where it works. And when I think about that, I'm concerned because my job is to run an effective and cost-efficient school library program. I have to tell you, sitting in front of you, that cutting the library paraprofessional in my building is one of the least effective ways of delivering service. I have to tell you that the front line of services, checking books in, getting them back on the shelves, providing access to the materials we have, whether they're print or electronic, you don't want to spend a teacher's salary on that job. And yes, we have fabulous volunteers. We have between ten and fifteen hours worth of volunteer hours that already support the work on top of a thirty-hour-a-week paraprofessional. But I'm concerned that looking at what an effective cut might be, if it hasn't happened within my program, may not have happened in other positions as well. So, I urge you to look at where cuts are effective and efficient. Look at where there are pockets of money and where student numbers being affected really are making a difference for students on a day-to-day basis, and make sure that you have the best information as you move forward with your decisions. Again, cutting at our library paraprofessional level just doesn't make sense. So, please, I encourage you, in your volunteer time, as you sit in front of us tonight, to think about whether volunteers can do all of the work that our paras provide in our libraries. I know that you've got volunteer positions on your board that so far are going unfilled. So, think about whether that will really work in our school libraries as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Stephanie Miller, Marnie Slavik, Kathy Olwell.
Thank you again for having this meeting. I'll be quick. This past fall, Edmunds PTO sent Superintendent Genie Collins and Board President Alan Mattson a letter outlining the great need to increase staff to deal with curriculum and behavior issues at Edmunds. With one principal and one guidance counselor, the largest elementary population, growing transient population, ELL and special needs population, more help is needed. Unfortunately, I know you both are very busy. We didn't get a response, although I did hear last night after you left the city council meeting that, Genie, that you acknowledged that Edmunds in particular could use some additional staff. I realize that this is not going to happen with this budget, but I'm glad it's getting the ball rolling. But despite these challenges at Edmunds, we are also hearing about direct cuts being made and, at the same time, increases being made to central office. I've talked to a lot of parents over the last couple of weeks. I've been to a lot of these budget meetings. Not one parent is supporting any increases at this time to central office. A lot of parents are really upset about the loss of Spanish, and we have those freezing cold days when we thought we needed to get the petition in right away. We got two-hundred-and-fifty signatures, and the petition is still growing from people who do not want to see a cut to the Spanish program and library services. Unfortunately, the school board keeps asking us for input, but I've gone to all these meetings and city council meetings, and we haven't heard of any changes that are being proposed. And if things are being changed, the school budget from the original draft, it would be great if we could get some input as this ball is rolling over the past month. It seems like there's a lot of misinformation out there, but we're not hearing from the board about what may change, what might change. We're just keep coming here and talking to you. It's a lot of the same people saying the same thing night after night. You're all bored to death, I'm sure. So, and I just wanted to say one last thing. Betsy Green, I've never met her before, but I have talked to, she spoke earlier about the loss of Spanish and the direct effects it will have on Champlain and Edmunds in particular. I've talked to our principal, Shelley Mathias. She has said that if we cut Spanish at Edmunds and Champlain, she doesn't know about the other schools, it will also have to cut, for sure, PE and music. And I feel like that really brings up an equity issue in all our schools, because if it's not going to happen at all the schools, it shouldn't happen just at ours. So, I just think it's something to think about. Thank you.
Marnie Slavik, Kathy Olwell, Chelsea Piazza.
Hello. My name's Marnie Slavik, and I'm going to echo a little bit about what Stephanie just said in regards to Edmunds Elementary. I want to emphasize again that we have the largest elementary school, approximately three-hundred-and-sixty students, and over great, fifty percent of those are free and reduced lunch. And we did request additional support for our students, such as behavioral specialist or vice principal. And our student population has shifted over the past several years, and that is, was the goal of the district. We have met that goal. But with the shifting of the student demographics, we need additional support for our students because in the long run, what we want is to try to figure out the best learning environment for all of our students. We're unhappy about the cuts to Spanish and library. As Stephanie mentioned, we received a petition with over two-hundred signatures in less than five days. And I have attended four out of the five meetings that you've had in the last month, and I would just like to know what, if any, changes have been incorporated into the school budget based on the public comments received, and when the newest and most detailed draft of the budget will be publicly available. Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Kathy Olwell, Chelsea Piazza, and Sherwood Smith.
Hi, I'm Kathy Olwell. I live in Ward One. And I'm here really because I think I've watched this now for twenty years. I've sat where you've sat. I understand how hard this is and that every time it comes to budget, you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. But I can't watch anymore. In the last two or three budgets, we've cut stuff that touches children. And I feel like we are not cutting things that aren't touching children. So, I've watched, over my twenty years here, the central office is, I know twice what it was when I was on the school board sixteen, eighteen years ago. There is double the amount of personnel up there. They're all making a lot more money than people did twenty years ago, but so does everybody else. So, that's less of my problem, and more my problem is that kids only have one chance at an education. And when we start cutting this stuff, it means that they are missing out. This city, I know you all know, has, the free and reduced lunch count has risen, and our test scores have also gone down. And in order to deal with poverty, we all know that we have to spend more money on those children. We have to give them far more help in order to be able to get the same education as my middle, upper-middle-class kids got, because my kids were coming in with a lot more than many of these kids are coming in with. So, I just beg of you, figure out every way possible. You can go out to the city and try and share things with the city, but don't touch what affects our children. Because I see this city, if we are not, with the rise in the poverty, if we are not spending money and making sure that these kids really are educated, none of us are going to want to live in this city in ten, twenty years, because it'll look like New Haven. Yes, it's a university city. It's got a lot of colleges. But the school district goes down, and so too goes the city, and no one's going to want to live here anymore. So, please, I mean, Genie, you have to figure out how at the central office and everywhere else where we spend money, we can save it. It's not an option to keep cutting teachers and people that work directly with our children and teach them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Chelsea Piazza, Sherwood Smith, Betsy Nolan.
Good evening. I'm Chelsea Piazza. I am the HR and diversity project coordinator at Central Office, which is kind of a fancy title for administrative assistant for several departments. I have a lot of roles at the district. I work for, directly for Diversity Equity Department for the superintendent and for even a little bit of IT and HR. I'm here today just to talk about cuts that could possibly be made to the Diversity and Equity Department, specifically funds that support professional development, such as Washington Consulting Group training. And oddly enough, a year ago today, I had the opportunity to take that training for two days, and it was life-changing for me. It directly impacted the way that I treat every person that walks through the doors at Central Office, every time I answer the phone, how I treat my fellow coworkers. And I feel like our department is just getting go- And I feel like our department is just getting going with making positive change. And a lot of it starts with trainings like Washington Consulting Group, because it's a step one for bringing awareness to our employees of, these are the changes that we have to make. And, and most of the people that we talk to, who have been through the training, also feel that it has changed their life, and you can usually see the positive impact through them as an employee. And I'm not even a teacher, and I feel like it has directly impacted the way that I treat parents, that I treat students, and again, my fellow coworkers. So, that's pretty much all I had to say. And thank you for all your hard work that you do, I know that this is a very, very tough decision that you guys have to make right now, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Sherwood Smith, Betsy Nolan, and Curtis Reed.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, there is no doubt, yes, if you are considering speaking, you can keep signing up over here, and a couple pages have been brought up to me as the night goes on, and likewise, if you, even at the end, I will be asking again if there's anyone else who hasn't had a chance who would like to speak. So, Sherwood, please.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Sherwood Smith, I'm a parent of a child in the school district, and have gotten asked to be on committees, so I have, as everyone else said, an appreciation for the difficult task you have before you. I simply, I feel it's important to point out that one of the things that the district has said it now prides itself on, is that the school district's mission statement, that the Burlington School District is in partnership with the families and the communities that will educate and inspire students to influence and shape their futures. And that, one of the challenges you have before you in terms of this budget, is that it's been made clear to you that this district has changed drastically from when I came here, close to 17 years ago, in terms of the makeup of the schools, you've heard from other people besides me, in terms of the ethnic and cultural diversity and economic challenges that they face. And how you will do that, in terms of supporting your commitment to a diverse range of children, maintaining their connections with their parents, maintaining the connection with the community in the schools, whether that's the homeschool liaisons, whether that's the community outreach programs, whether that's the ELL programs, homeschool compact, library paras, I'm not sure, but I really want to sort of passionately ask you, as you're sitting down and making these decisions, to raise the question that if you cut connections with parents, especially with those most vulnerable parents, the parents who can't give up several hours a night to sit down here and lobby, the parents who can't come to the school PTO meetings, because they're working two jobs, the parents who don't have the political clout to use their money to get what they want, or don't know, not yet learned how in the US that you use your political clout to get what you want. So, one of your big challenges, considering the makeup of the board, considering the small changes in terms of the district's teacher makeup, is how do you address the communities who are potentially invisible? And I would raise the question that some of the cuts you're looking at, in terms of the positions or some of where your largest diversity is, at least in terms of cultural and ethnic diversity. So, I think there's some real challenges here, and if you're going to make the cuts, then I think the other big issue is, then what is the plan? What is the viable alternative? Budget stuff I saw changed a lot, I think the new, for those who haven't looked, the new PowerPoint's a lot more specific than the old one, but I really do want to ask that question of, what is the long-term plan? If you make the changes, you say, will we be back here next year making similar ones? Or what is the long-term plan out there to deal with it? Because I do understand that the economy is not likely to make giant improvements. So, what I'm really asking for, more than anything else, is a clearly articulated vision of how you're going to continue to support the diverse community of students and parents, how you're going to deal with the economic challenges that the district faces, and that are faced by our children, who are members of this school, given what you know is happening, so that people can understand, if the question is, why are we going to be asking for more money, and that they can't afford it because of their taxes, what's going to be happening in the schools? Because it is true that poor schools do mean people's home values are going to go down just as much as their home values are going to go down if you raise the costs. So, I think that is what I'm really pushing for, so that if we come back here next year, we understand how the path has been laid in terms of where we're going, and how it continues to meet the very mission statement that this board has laid out for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherwood. Betsy Nolan, Curtis Reed.
Hi, my name's Betsy Nolan, and I know many of you, because I've had your children as students of mine as a teacher at the Edmonds Middle School. And there's two issues that I want to talk to you about today that are really fundamentally integrated. One of them is the issue of equity and diversity in our school, and the second is the issue of the cuts to the Spanish and potentially music programs in our school. And I think ultimately, cutting the instrumental lessons out of the music program, and cutting the Spanish program out of the elementary schools, which in turn will change the music implementation model for the elementary schools so radically as to be pretty much ineffectual, is going to have an incredibly, incredibly devastating impact on not only students of color, but low SES students in our school district. There is bounds and bounds of research about the impact that music instruction has on brain development, especially when it comes to mathematics. So if we're talking about test scores, music is fundamental. I have a student in my chorus right now who came to our school about four weeks ago. She doesn't speak any English, not a word, but she sings in chorus every day. And this is a place where people can access education when they are not ready to access the core academic content. And it provides neurological infrastructure for them to be able to access that when they are ready, when their skills develop further. The other issue I want to talk to you about is more directly related to diversity and equity, and that has to do with the professional development trainings that have been offered by the Equity Council. And Burlington is such an amazing city, and it gets recognized all over the country as being one of the most livable places in the United States. And it would be a tragedy to lose that. We have an opportunity, as our city becomes more diverse, to do it right. And that means providing professional development for our teachers, who are primarily white, like me, to have a better understanding of the experience of students of color in our school, to have a better understanding of how to best meet their needs and to cross the cultural divide, especially with the large refugee population in our community. There is a really important need for professional development for teachers, so that we can best meet the needs of all of our students. Our students, whether they be white or whether they be black, their lives are enriched by having a diverse community. I have talked to so many parents who have talked about the fact that they don't send their kids to private school, even though they could afford it, because they think that the experience of being in a diverse school system is a gift that they can give to their children. So, the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to invite all of you to the Edmonds Middle School Sixth Grade Chorus Band and Orchestra Concert tomorrow evening. You'll see over 100 students performing after only four short months of practice, and you'll see what an amazing product comes. The pride that the students put into the work that they do, and the number of parents that are drawn into the school community because of the vibrant music program that happens there, and the opportunities that we have to meet with students and parents and talk with them about their child's educational experience, both within the music program and outside of the music program, because that draw is there for them. So, thank you, and I hope to see you tomorrow.
Thank you. Curtis Reed, followed by Nancy Westbrook and Erica Low.
Good evening. I've come to collect the door prize for the individual who's traveled the furthest to speak to you this evening. I woke up this morning in Brattleboro. I am the exec, my name is Curtis Reed, I'm the Executive Director of Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity. We are a statewide organization who's, who envisions a Vermont, where every Vermont community is free of prejudice and discrimination of all kinds. We drill that down to a mission, really working with Vermont leaders around issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity. We work with the Agency of Education, we work with Agency for Commerce and Community Development, we work with Vermont State Police, we work with our Department of Health, really working with leaders in those, in those departments and divisions around, how do you, how do you seize the benefits of a more multiracial, multi-ethnic, multicultural Vermont? And how do you address the challenges? How many of you are business owners? Just, none of you, okay? The, one of the things we've done, for example, we've created the African-American Heritage Trail. We're looking for ways to expand the economic pie in the state of Vermont, and feel that there's an untapped market in the multicultural marketplace to bring ethnic, racial minorities to visit the state. Now, in doing so, we want to make sure that every tourist, every visitor, has a very pleasurable educational experience, because we want them to pull out those iPhones and, you know, tweet their friends and family, you know, "Come to Vermont." You know, and, and unless we have an expanded sort of revenue base, and tourism and agriculture are the two largest in the state, unless that's expanding, then we're going, we're going to come up short at budget time. We, we also work sort of locally, work with a lot of state agencies, but right here in Burlington, we've begun work on a strategic plan for diversity and equity for the city of Burlington. We work with the Chamber of Commerce, the Lexington Plain Regional Chamber of Commerce, on rebranding Burlington as Vermont's most international, most culturally rich destination. We also, tomorrow, we begin work with the, with the police department. Again, most visitors, when they come to the state, when they come to an area, the only public official that they come in contact with, typically someone in law enforcement, either because they're speeding, or because they're in some sort of distress, or they've been the victim of a crime, or witness to a crime. And so a lot of our training really focuses on bias. Now, one of the, one of the challenges that we see sort of statewide, is that there is an absence, not a total absence, of individuals, institutions, that are conspicuously courageous when it comes to addressing issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity. These three areas are not add-ons, they are business essentials. They're not add-ons, we don't sort of attach them onto an existing, an existing structure, but they're really woven through each and everything that you do. Now, I'm here because I heard this sort of rumor that the work that the Washington Consulting Group might be in jeopardy as relative to budget cuts. I was really happy to hear that someone had attended their training and found it profoundly transformative in terms of the way that they approach the work that they do. The most valuable resource that we have, personnel, teachers, frontline individuals that are working with kids, if they have very little understanding, a deficit in skill sets, in working with diverse populations, so they become inclusive, and that they're working in an equitable environment, then you've shot yourself in the foot.
And I need you to conclude, Curtis, your time is basically up.
Okay. You know, and I just mention that because we, we need a workforce that is capable and skilled when it comes to addressing the multicultural marketplace. And if we don't, then we might as well, you know, shutter up the shop and, and go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Westbrook, Erica Low, followed by Troy Porter.
Hi, my name is Nancy Westbrook, I'm a parent of two children at Edmonds Elementary School, with one a third starting in kindergarten next year. I came to not comment, but feeling the need to make two quick, hopefully quick, comments. First of all, last night I went to the city council meeting, and when a couple of the questions were asked about the budget, and specifically about the teacher increases over the next few years, and I think it was Mr. Pillsbury who mentioned, we wanted to show that we valued our teachers, and we, and that was part of the justification for that increase over three years. And I just want you guys to think about when you revisit the budget, about how you can show we value the kids in this school. The reality is, we have a 60-plus million dollar budget, the cost of these library assistants, these Spanish teachers, I mean, it's not these huge budget items, there's huge impacts within the school. So I, I ask you guys to really think about revisiting any cuts to direct kid involvement and show that you also truly value the kids' experience, because I think that it just will make a really big impact, let alone, I think, logistically, it's going to be a nightmare, but I think that, you know, you guys should really try to find some other ways that don't impact direct student instruction. I think that it would be really a detriment to the kids' experience at the elementary and middle school level. My second thought, that's also hopefully quick, is that I don't want to be here next year, I think I'm looking to, and not that you guys, and I don't want to be in your shoes either, I respect that it's a very difficult job, Genie, difficult job, I don't want the job, I think it's very hard, but I think that we're in really, really tough financial times, and so I'm really looking to you guys this year to try to come up with creative ways to better financially plan, that we're not cutting Spanish, we're not cutting art, the art curriculum, we're not, you know, that, that we're maintaining the classroom levels, if not improving them. So, I, I think it's going to require some, some hard work, obviously, and some really, a lot of brainstorming to get creative, because it isn't going to get easier, I mean, that, that we're in a financial difficult period that is not going away. So, I really, as a parent, but also as a taxpayer, I, I just would like to see us not be at the bottom of the ninth in these really tricky calls every single year, so.
Thank you. Erica Low, Troy Porter, and Jason Larber.
Hi, I'm Erica Low, and I sent all of you a pretty long email this week, so I'll keep this very short, because if you're like me, you probably get a lot of emails during the week and may not have read it. I wear a lot of hats in this district. I am a taxpayer in the South End, I have a daughter at Sustainability Academy, I am a teacher at VHS, I am on the Equity Council, and I also work for the Partnership for Change this year as the Community-Based Learning Fellow. You know, wearing all those hats, it's really difficult to look at these budget cuts, and I'd love to advocate against cuts at VHS or my daughter's school, but I'm not here to do that today. I'm here to do with what I see as the greatest need that we have here in the school district, and I think that is with diversity and equity. I have the pleasure in my position to get to talk to students and teachers at all of the schools, from preschool through the high school, through alternative schools. And, you know, I also went through the Washington Consulting Group training, and I can also say that for me, it was life-changing, and it has changed the lives of my colleagues, colleagues. You know, being an English teacher, I see a lot in my kids' writing, and our kids are struggling. Last year, we asked our kids to come up with questions they had about race and equity, and they generated 500 questions in our class, which just shows that they're thirsting to have these conversations. I really think that cuts to diversity and equity would really hurt our kids, and it would hurt our teachers who are struggling to support them. Today, I sat through a training on tools against racism and microaggressions with VHS teachers, and we had four teachers leading 90 other VHS teachers in these trainings, and those are members of the Equity Council. And without the Equity Council... And without the Equity Council, and without that Washington Consulting Group training, they may not have been able to do that. And we have, I heard time and time again, teachers saying, "We need more of these conversations. We need more tools." I grew up in a very white area and never experienced any diversity before teaching at the school. I need more training. So I'm asking for you to consider not training, not cutting diversity and equity. I love the Burlington School District. I love teaching here. I'm very passionate about this district. I appreciate everything that you do. I moved here from South Burlington just so my daughter could go to school here. And I want to see this place thrive. And I think that we need to make sure that we're helping all of our students. And for me, the best way I see us doing that is continuing to put in support for diversity and equity.
Thank you. Troy Porter, followed by Jason Lorber.
Hello, I'm Troy Porter. I'm here to say a few things. I didn't realize that I was gonna say anything today. But as I've been here, I've realized that there are not any students that are actually coming up to speak. And I'm not even in high school yet, so it makes it a little bit harder for me to understand that side of the fence. And, but I can say that I have my little siblings that are in two different schools in this district. One goes to, well, two go to IAA, and another one goes to CP Smith. And it sort of breaks my heart to think that you're even thinking about cutting the librarian, well, that branch at least. And Spanish, my little brother loves, and I had a great time in languages as I've grown up. And it just sort of like affects me to realize that like, that affects not only me, but my little siblings. And it's gonna be affecting other generations and other students. Though I realize that I cannot even like start to understand the challenges that must come up in your jobs. But I do just say that like, my little brother and my little sisters have told me many things, and they come home with a smile every day because they tell me something happened normally in either PE or a language or the library. And that just makes me happy to think that that's there. And I realize how much we need them, like. Me, if I go to the library, that's the safest place for me, just because we can, it's just quiet. And I always know that librarians can help us. And in my language, I take French, and that's just something I'm really good at. And I just think it helps me, like, in this world even, but also just in this transition to high school next year. And I know a lot of teachers have like a hard time thinking that they might not only lose their job, but they're also not gonna be able to help their students that they have a bond with. And that just is not only for me very sad, but it's also sort of angering for other people. Plus, there's just money issues that I don't understand, really. But that's for other people to speak, but yeah, I'm just done. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Jason Lorber. And at this point, I don't have any other names, but Leandra had passed on. There are names, if someone could bring those over, it'd be great. Sounds good.
Great, thanks. I'm Jason Lorber, and I just want to thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys do. I know this is often a thankless job, and it's a lot of hard work and even more patience. But because of your work, because of your vision and because of the boldness of action, we're doing great things. And I want to particularly talk about the magnet schools. My son is a second grader at Integrated Arts Academy. And I know the magnets are only five years old, so they'd be a kindergartner if they were a kid. And, and yet, in that time, in this kindergarten year, we have met many of our goals and we have much more learning to do. Our goals were to integrate students among, around socioeconomic lines, to create stronger quality, and to embrace diversity. And the results already are impressive. Socioeconomic integration is up. IAA has a waiting list. Diversity is up. Quality education is up. Test scores are up. And that's across all socioeconomic groups. And it's not just up a little, it's up ten percent, and that's a significant amount. We also know that test scores are only one indication. They're not the most important indication. One of the most important indications is engagement. That when kids are engaged, and when parents are engaged, and parent engagement is up, we know that learning happens. And with students, we know engagement is up because we also see that classroom disruptions are down when there is co-teaching with the arts and the mainstream teachers partnering together. Computer use throughout Burlington is up. And the Integrated Arts Academy at Wheeler has been in a troubled spot, yet the last three years, it is the school with the lowest amount of graffiti. It's working. The experiment is working, and we've only just begun. And we've done this by being very frugal. Our costs in Burlington are below the statewide average. And that's despite the fact that we have additional costs that other communities do not bear. So thank you, thank you. We also know that our enrollment is up. Enrollment has been up over the last five years, including this year. That's not true for most of Vermont, but here in Burlington it is. And we know that we have, we're gonna be adding a kindergarten. We have seventy more kids in kindergarten than we do graduating seniors. So the trends are going forward, and that's a good thing. We, so thank you to you, thank you to our voters for saying yes. And they said yes even when we asked them a very difficult question to sustain significant cost increases. And that was at a time when many politicians were saying, "Don't do it," or were being silent. And that, but our voters said yes. They said yes to a budget that supported our magnets, that supported the arts, Spanish, diversity and equity efforts. And they did it when the tax increase was large, but they saw that the benefit was even larger. And it's not just to the students. The benefit is to all of us. It's to diversity. It's to innovation. It's to home values. It wasn't just Erica who moved to Burlington, but many people are moving to Burlington because we are the most livable city in this country. And a big part of that is because of our quality schools. A rising tide lifts all boats. So please, be bold, continue. Let's not pit one great program against another. Let's continue to be visionary and supporting an amazing education system that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Hi. Is this open mic?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you.
I'll try out some new jokes. My name is Autumning Ruff Spencer, and I am a parent of two kids at the Integrated Arts Academy and also on the PTO exec board at the Integrated Arts Academy. I want to echo a little bit what Jason said. I think it's really important that we not have this conversation as, within the context of pitting one excellent program against another. I think that, I think there are a lot of factors at play. I think it's really important what the gentleman who were here earlier, the retirees, said about their pensions and about their salary increases and about what it's like trying to live on a fixed income. And to that end, I feel really strongly that, and I was a classroom, public classroom, public school classroom educator for six years. And so I've been a teacher, and this may not be popular, but I think it's really important that if the school board is going to shelter us from the teacher contract negotiations, that is to say, if teacher contracts are gonna be settled on before we have a conversation about the budget, which financially strikes me as odd, but I understand how that happens, then it's incumbent upon the school board to make sure that they put a budget in place that does not come down on the backs of kids in any way. There are huge cost drivers in teacher contracts. One gentleman said, "Offer a 401K, like a lot of the industry, like a lot of industries do." I know it's a sacred ground, and I think teachers should be highly paid and well compensated. I also think that if we're gonna have a budget discussion that shelters us from some of those things and then comes back to the public and say, "Well, we can't touch these things, but we're gonna cut these things," and we'll sort of throw them to you and kind of watch as you go at each other, it's not okay. It's incumbent on the school board to present us with a budget that does not touch direct student services at any school. I want to know what that looks like. What is it possible? What does that look like? How do we do that? And that does include training for teachers, because that training is the front lines of creating, of helping build and create and fortify citizens, our young students. So, basically. I don't want to talk about whether we should have Spanish, or we should have arts magnet coaches, or we should have the library. We should have all those things, all of them. And we should be able to have a conversation about all the pieces of the budget. And short of that, I would honestly like to see what a budget looks like that doesn't touch any direct student services. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, Leandra had passed. If you would like, please. Leandra?
Thanks for having me. My hesitancy to speak earlier wasn't for fear of public speaking, but rather because I'm somebody who really likes to understand issues before I speak publicly about them. It's clear that I won't understand all the issues that face you tonight, but I do think that it's important to speak about something that matters to me. And while I wholly support what Autumn has just said in that I don't believe we should be pitting programs against really great programs, I'm gonna speak from my heart about what matters to me, more than some of the others, although I do think that all of those programs are important. Like Erica, we transferred our son from, we moved from South Burlington to Burlington specifically to send him to the Burlington Schools. We started at Champlain, and he went there for kindergarten and first grade. But we moved him specifically to Sustainability Academy. Because that school, we felt, had an energy and a passion that Champlain didn't have. It had a purpose and a drive and a real commitment to something that was different and something that we thought was important for our son to experience. Had a dedication and a cause to a greater purpose. It was the coach who, at Sustainability, who really brought us in. And I have a very significant fear that without those two coaches, both at SA and at IAA, those schools will not continue to thrive the way that we see them thriving today. Smart businesses take products that work and they grow them. They take products that aren't working and they change them. We have products right now that are working. Those magnet schools, they're thriving. As people said before, we have notoriety around the country in some places who are looking at those schools and saying they want to model their districts based on what Burlington is doing. Why on earth would we take something that is working so well and remove two of the things that make them function so well? It just seems ludicrous to me. Those schools are changing lives in the students that are there. People are noticing them. We could make a change to make many of the schools, if not all of them in our district, operate like the magnet schools. I don't know what the cost of that would be. I don't know how that affects the budget. But I would encourage you to look at the things we're doing really well and hold on to them, and look at some of the things that aren't, and look to change them. Thank you.
Thank you, Leandra. I don't think I have anyone, I don't think we have anyone else signed up, but if there's anyone who has not spoken who would like to?
Could I say a word? Thank you. I just would like to sort of place a balancing voice for higher school budgets. I don't have children. I never have. I've always voted for every school budget. If I had the option, I'd vote for a higher one. I know money isn't always spent as well as it could be. It isn't always as efficient as it could be. I only think that reducing budgets will make things worse. So we've had a couple of people talk about the cost and the effect on property taxes. I have trouble paying my bills. But I would never hesitate to vote for an increase in the school budget because you pay now or you pay later. Prepared students become good citizens, and unprepared students don't as much. And just as a balancing thought, there are many of us who would pay more for the school budget without hesitation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in at public comment?
I've been on sabbatical for a while from school board meetings. I decided to make a guest appearance today. My name is Susie Conford. I've been an active member of Diversity Now and Access Burlington, and been involved in a lot of issues in the district. And I just have a couple of quick things to say. First, that I have been absolutely stunned into silence, and those of you who know me know that's a very difficult feat, at the excellence of our music programs, elementary and middle school. I'm not a musician myself, but when I see what those talented professionals have done with our children, it just silences me. It's so good. Second thing I want to say is that it was really fascinating tonight to sit here and to listen to all the talk about diversity. Because I'm going back four, five years when, you know, we barely said the word. And when we said it, it was, you know, sort of, should we really say it? Can we use this word? Should we use another word? We've come a long way on one level, but I'm really hoping that you're not gonna be mesmerized by our seeming fluency with some of these concepts. We are at the very beginning of the road as a community. We finally have in place a team of highly talented professionals that can take us forward. But they can only take us forward to the extent that you give them the tools they need to bring change to each and every individual in our community. It's a journey. There's a great book by Miles Horton. It's called, "You Make the Road by Walking." And each of you, as school board members, really are creating for us a road that we're gonna walk as a community into the future. And I think to the extent that you support in every way the efforts around equity, inclusion, and diversity, you're creating a pathway that everyone can travel together. The last thing I want to say is that the meta-issues about vision and economy and structure, I think are really important ones. My background is organizational behavior. And I've been kind of reflecting over the last few years on the difficulty this board seems to have, and I think all boards seem to have now, in terms of you really effectively exercising your proper role as a board in terms of accountability with the district. And I think part of that is actually built into the structure of the board. You have people going on and coming off, and you get to a place where you have a good sense of what's going on and you see some things you want to hold the district accountable to, and then people leave. Then new people come in and they're not quite sure. They don't want to do anything too quickly because they don't want to do the wrong thing. And we keep perpetuating a lack of accountability. It's kind of shocking to me, actually, that we're here tonight, at this point in January, only now having a clearer budget with specific details. I don't know how that comes to be. And I think, I want to say, you know, as a colleague to all of you, that it is your role as the board to hold the district accountable and to help them achieve their best work. If you don't do it, no one else can. But I would also encourage you to be thinking strategically about how the board is structured, how people come in and off the board, and be thinking about how can you uphold that part of your responsibility, fiduciary as well as accountability organizationally, given present structures. Last thing, thank you to those of you who are sitting to the left over here on the diversity and equity side for all that you do and for what you take on a day-to-day basis from all of us white folks who are coming into the story and have yet a lot to learn. I want to thank you for your professionalism and your commitment and your willingness to stick it out with us. And finally, to each and every one of you, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Once again, if anyone else would like to speak? I guess seeing no further, no further folks interested in public comment, we would move on to the next agenda item, which would be the board report. I have a few items I wanna mention as briefly as possible and then if any of the board members have something they could add, please let me know. The proposed real estate transactions. The update I can give on the UVM lease is that we are trying to schedule a meeting for Thursday related to the lease with the appropriate parties, which include UVM and the city to take a look at some aspects of that lease. I can't offer any more than that. If there's questions on any of this stuff, people, please just raise your hand and stop me if you have a question in there. The next thing is running for school board. If you would like to run for school board, you do need to get signed petitions. Signed petitions are due Monday, January 27th at 5:00 PM at City Hall. And I, you know, have heard of a number of people. I've talked to a number of people who are possibly considering running, who have petition sheets out there. So, I would encourage as many folks as possible to run for school board as, you know, what I think we, all of us here probably ran because we think it's one of the more important forms of public service that you could be doing in the city. January 25th, the board retreat with the Winuski School Board related to Partnership for Change. The joint board retreat. If someone knows the answer to this question, please yell it out. I'm not exactly sure of the site, but we... I'm sorry, where?
The Inn at Essex.
The Inn at Essex. Thank you, Erica. I had seen it somewhere, but I couldn't find it right now. We had a planning, we had a planning call last week for this. The retreat will be from 8:00 AM to 1:15 PM on January 25th, which is a Saturday, at the Inn at Essex. In the planning, you know, there's going to be some information about Act 77, which includes personal learning plans as well as time for us to learn and meet, learn from and meet the other board. And also hearing from students and staff about what student-centered learning means, what is happening in student-centered learning. And at least one of board members here has sent in some questions which have been forwarded on to Hal Colston, who is setting up the retreat. If anyone else has questions or comments of things they'd like to hear about, learn about at the retreat, please let me or Hal, Hal Colston know. I would ask that school board members do take a look. There are gonna be a number of ballot initiatives on the city election this year. There is, you know, I think we've heard about some of them. I think the one that may have the influence, well, that does have an influence on school district again is the charter change for the ward boundaries and how that'll affect the makeup of the school board. You know, we have talked about that in a bit in the past, but I just would ask all to make sure you look at the various different items there. Does anyone, I did have a conversation today regarding charter change in particular for redistricting. And I think that I have sent out emails explaining that we are part of the other vote. That one larger vote for the school, I'm sorry, for the city, that it's currently proposed, the city council put on that we would be following the same makeup as the city council. That was not the proposal that came, or the recommendation that came from this board to the city council. And, you know, my understanding is that, my understanding is this, that while that is currently the format of it, it's not something that, I guess, which I didn't understand at this until I was asking some questions today, it is not necessarily written in stone that that has to be the final. You know, if there was a push from the board, we could potentially make another push, but we would have to do it to the city council if we were looking for a different makeup of the board from what is proposed right now, which is the eight ward members and the four district-level members. This is not something I understood until a conversation I had today. So, I'm just putting that out for the board and it might inspire a question or two or maybe some follow-up emails, but I'm gonna put it out. Greg? Yeah, my understanding is, my understanding is this. You know, we're talking about it and I, you know, the discussion came up and they said, "Well, you know, it technically is not final on the ballot yet and if you came and made a push to the city council, you know, maybe it would get taken up, but it would, you know, that would be in your hands." Kathy? Kathy, followed by Linda.
So, could we ask that we go back to our eight, which we recommended?
You know, that was our original recommendation and, you know, in fact, I think I was kind of asked to, I think it was part of the reason the conversation came up is, you know, I was basically being told that, you know, if that's still your recommendation, you should come back and tell us that. Linda?
I just think at this point, it's probably an issue. I think there's a lot going on out there to not pass the whole thing and that we might as well just wait and see what triggers off. And it's not gonna happen in 2015 anyway.
Right. It has also been suggested to us that even if we do go that way, we could come back and in the next election, ask for something different as well, or even if there were a special election.
Oh, I would recommend that we come back in the fall because that'll be a fall election would be a better time to get something like that passed than a spring election. And we could do that, so.
Ken here back here, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, I think, I'll just say that Linda's recommendation was to wait and see what happens to the existing charter change and even, you know, we could go back after this particular charter change, if it goes through, to make another recommendation or ask the city council to put another charter change back on the ballot. Linda was basically advocating just for waiting.
And Moreau came, oh, I'm sorry. Moreau came over to us at the bagel shop last week, I guess, and said he would support that. But I don't know that you wanna put that, with all that we've got going and all the energy we have to put into passing our budget right now, I would prefer to put the energy into that now and this issue can wait 'cause we do have time and we could bring it up for November.
Okay. Keith, did you want to add?
That's fine.
Okay. Miriam?
I would offer an alternative if you wanted. I chaired the committee that, we had a small committee going around.
Yeah, can you speak into the microphone? Unable to hear out in the audience.
Is this better? Can you play it for me?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I think we did the wrong one. Is that? Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you. So, I chaired a small committee that worked on the process of coming up with a recommendation. And I certainly understand what Linda's saying and in one hand feel like we should focus on board business, but if that committee wanted to reconvene, I would be happy to have a meeting where we could discuss in a little more detail pros and cons and why, in fact, the city council didn't like our recommendation and if we had any hope of changing their mind, even if we wanted to. So, I would offer that up. I would have to, the rest of the members of the committee would have to wanna meet that I certainly would be willing to have a meeting and talk about it and come back to the whole board and say this is what the small committee recommends and we do or not do.
Just a question of clarification. When would we have to, when does the language have to be finalized? I mean, is, how much of a timeframe are we under?
I think it would be, I think there's a council meeting on the 27th, perhaps. I mean, I'm just kind of looking at Mondays and I think it would have to be at that point. That's how quick it would have to be. Keith?
I guess I will say, I was notified last evening by Norm Blais that if we wanted to come, we should come at noon on Friday. The charter change committee has hearings and that is when constituents come up and have some concerns about a charter change, that that's when you bring it up.
So, it would be noon on this Friday?
Their meeting is at noon on Friday, he told me.
I guess I would feel, I don't wanna, I know we need to get to the budget, but that's why I offered this other offering of a small, who was talking about it. I would, I feel that for many reasons, coming in front of the charter change committee as constituents, not what we want to be. If we're serious about this, we would come in front of the full city councils with the proposal and the full council to hear us. So, I would offer, if anyone wants to join in that, in fact, if you do it, if there's not enough interest in the role at this point, then I think we should give it as we suggest. So, I guess, is this something you want to make a motion about?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna, I think it would be the way to do it just to, you know, if you, if this is something you'd be interested in, just, you know, to basically move that we go in front of either the charter change committee or the full council.
Let me make a motion then, okay?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that the school board redistricting subcommittee reform for one meeting to discuss the possibility of putting together a proposal to put forth before the city council at their meeting on the, is that the 27th?
Yeah, my understanding is the 27th.
The 27th. So, that's my motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second. I guess it's open for discussion. You've made some discussion already, okay. I guess the only thing I would add is I felt an obligation to bring this to the board, having had the conversation today. I am actually much more in Linda's camp. I think this is something where, while it is a board goal, I don't, I think right now we have, I think, a primary goal of a budget. So, I appreciate that you bring a motion forward, but I am in Linda's camp or I'd rather, I think, wait. Any further discussion?
That there's a motion on the floor, right?
Yeah, I was speaking to the motion.
Oh, okay. No, I'm just wondering, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of reforming the committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
I guess I'll take a show of hands. All in favor of reforming the committee, say aye, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, I was late. I was trying to check the time on this and there is a 27th. Can I ask a question regarding, this seems apropos. I appreciate your offer, Miriam. I think it's a great idea if there are people that want to do it, but my question is, are you gonna be a committee of one? I haven't heard anyone else on the committee. Well, I know you are not. I'm kind of asking to the other people who are on, who have been on that committee, are they, are they willing to come back and do it before we say, "Yes, we're gonna do it," and then we have no one that wants to show up at the meeting?
Okay, as one of the committee members, if this passes, I will, I will come.
Uh-uh.
I will be there. And, okay. Any other questions or discussion? So, I guess I'd ask for a show of hands. All in favor of reforming this committee, raise a, say, raise your hand? Okay, so we have four votes yes with one student and all opposed at this point? Five, six, seven. I guess I only saw seven hands and four, but that would be against. So, we will not reform that at this point. I have no other items right now for board report. Did any other board members have anything for board report? Seeing none, I'll move on again to the next item, which is the superintendent's report. Jeanne?
Thank you. I'll be brief 'cause we have lots to cover tonight. Diversity and Equity update. Our New American Progress reports did go out for the second quarter. Thank you to Linda Wosleben, our AmeriCorps, and the high school for getting those out. These reports were co-designed with the New American leaders through our commitments for Parents for Change. Our commitment is to continue doing this each quarter. There has been some discussion and interest in broadening it beyond. The New American students would love to do that. That likely will take resources we don't have at this time, but it would be nice to keep it, you know, in the, in our thoughts for our future when we maybe do have the capacity to do that. But right now piloting it with our New American students seems to be a successful start. Partnership for Change update. Actually, Kathy may wanna share with me on this one. Do you wanna share and I'll take it back?
Sure. Sure. One of the things that's gonna happen next school year, instead of having fellows, fellowships that we've had the past two years, we're gonna have coaches. And they do this already at CVU. There are two instructional coaches already, so our plan will sort of follow the model that's already being used there. These will be coaches at each high school, Burlington and Winuski, working with current teachers. That's where we would be looking to hire the coaches from. And there was just some information I wanted to share with curriculum. When the discussion on advisories came to the committee, there was, in case it comes back, you might wanna look at the youth risk behavior surveys, especially in the personal safety section and see what kids are up against and how advisories might help with their issues. Back to Jeanne.
Thank you. Adam Orvansky, the union reformer who was paid for by Nellie Mae Education Fund and is helping Burlington and Winuski think of different ways that we could look at our labor management relations, will be in the district on February 4th to 6th. There can be an opportunity for board members to meet with him. I've shared that with Alan and he'll be following up with you for just an opportunity to hear him. And he'll, he's gonna kind of follow up, see how our living contract is doing, see what advice we might have. We plan on spending some time with him, with our committee that is looking at our pilot for scheduling of meetings, et cetera. I do not have enrollment update available to you this month. Dana's on vacation, so it will return next month. Also, just a reminder, kindergarten registration for next year is open right now. The forms are on the website. Kindergarten registration closes in early to mid-March, at which point all registrations that come through, the closing date, will be considered and any registration that comes after the closing date will then be considered on first come, first served. Administration searches. Nikki's here. She may want to correct me or fill in. We have begun the Hunt Middle School principal search. Nikki is leading that search. There is a second parent meeting for parent input tomorrow night. And there is a timeline for that search, which is on the website under the HR department and we are linking it, I don't know if it has been linked yet, to the Hunt Middle School website, so you can see the details on that. Also, conversations have begun between Nikki and the high school about the Burlington High School assistant principal searches and that's where we are at the moment with administrative searches. That's all I have for tonight. Questions?
Rebecca?
Are you receiving resumes already for those searches?
The positions are open. The timeline is on the website. The positions have been open for some time, yes.
And do you have a sense of how many applicants you're getting and whether at this point they're meeting the diversity goals?
I'm not sure if Nikki is able to answer that. Do you have a sense of how many applicants we have and? It's early yet. Yeah, that's really something that needs to be done at the right time in the process with research advisory.
And maybe I didn't hear this, but what time is the meeting tomorrow night at Hunt?
5:30?
No, it's 6 o'clock.
7 o'clock. The meeting tomorrow night at Hunt is 6 o'clock. Six.
There's also another faculty input session. There's going to be a second faculty input session on Thursday at 3:30.
You said Thursday at 3:30 is what?
Yes, a second faculty input session will be Thursday at 3:30. So, there will be two parent input sessions, two faculty input sessions, and a search advisory committee is in place and all of that information is on the website.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else for Jeanne, I'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Keith? Is there a second? Linda? The consent agenda, are there any items, whether it's a consent agenda or minutes, that need to be removed? Liz?
December 3rd, ITC minutes, please.
Yes. You need to, you would like to pull those for?
Just to reflect a misstatement, to correct a misstatement in them?
I, what I would do is just ask for them to be removed from the consent agenda and then discuss with the committee the adjustment that needs to be made. That's right, right? That's what you're looking to do?
Yeah, I don't know if it has to go back to committee. It's just one thing.
Okay. What is, I mean?
The end of St. Joe's discussion says that no action was taken, but we actually referred the issue to planning committee because Victor had the same request from the curriculum committee, so we referred it to planning. the Curriculum Committee, so we referred it to Planning, and the next Planning Committee happened to be the Budget Discussion, so it got bumped, but it still is referred to Planning Committee, so we did actually take some sort of action. But the minutes indicate we did nothing.
Right, and I'm hearing agreement that that should be taken, so if those minutes are simply amended to reflect that this was referred to Planning Committee, um, those will be amended.
Thank you.
To reflect that what is referred to Planning?
That the St., um, basically it said at the end of the discussion, the St. Joseph's Update, there was no immediate action, and I would say that the transactions were referred to...
The request for public meetings.
The public, who, I'm sorry, request for public meetings.
Was referred to Planning Committee.
Was referred to Planning Committee. Anything else related to consent agenda?
Yeah, I, I do, I just curious, we have two released from contracts in the middle of the year. It's unusual.
Yes, it is very unusual. Jenny St. Louis was a Spanish teacher here at the high school, she had been ripped from her position in New York, she accepted our position, she was just riff recall, given the discussions about Spanish in the district, if she were to turn down that riff recall, she potentially could find herself without a job as a new hire, so she asked to be released from her contract to accept the riff recall in rural district. With much sadness, um, she very much would like to stay here in Burlington. Amy DePerry, uh, has a family situation that has changed, and her husband has received a job out of state, um, and therefore she is asking to be released from her contract, which we generally approve when a spouse is leaving the state, as opposed to just not wanting to be here anymore.
Okay. Miriam? Oh, you're asking for Xander, okay, Xander.
Um, the December nineteenth budget hearing.
Yes?
Uh, Henry and I were both there, and we're not marked as attending.
Oh.
Okay, sorry, we will correct that. The budget hearing of December nineteenth. Anything else on the consent agenda items? Seeing nothing else, all in favor of the consent agenda and the consent agenda items as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well opposed? Okay, that has passed. Um, at this point, I will turn over the floor immediately to Keith for Finance Committee.
David, would you come up?
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, January eighth, and I know that we have three items, but given the hour and the fact that our, our constituents have asked us to talk about the budget, I think we should go right to our, our, our third item, and there was, part of our meeting, there was extensive discussion about the fiscal fifteen budget, given our, the Finance Committee's goal, and, um, we, we decided to put together a motion for the Board, but it's come to my attention that there has been some, because of our discussion, because of other information, there are changes to our, our proposed budget, so we'd like to, uh, present that to the Board at this time and have a full explanation, and then we can think Meredith's motion, she wants to make her motion, so we'll bring that up after we've heard a full explanation.
Great, thank you.
I believe the documents are on Board Docs.
The documents are on Board Doc. There are documents on Board Docs that were posted up tonight, um, we have been spending quite a bit of time over the last week refining assumptions made this year, assumptions made prior years, and trying to update as, with the most current information available to you tonight. I do have hard copies of the documents as well.
Will they be put on the overhead for audience?
I'm not sure, can it be? I'm...
We, we have...
If I stand on a chair and hit the buttons on the machine, we don't have...
No, but I have extra copies.
We also have it on this screen, I mean, the...
Is it on that screen?
This is hooked up to Board Docs right here.
Well, yeah, they, they click on the...
We don't have the remote control for this one.
Okay, so the, the audience can see it there?
Well, not yet.
Also, I noticed that you might have to refresh, the documents are under Planning Committee.
Yeah, if, it, it is there, under Planning, but you do have to refresh.
Do you mean the Board's special meeting from January seventh?
No, it's under, it's under the...
Item, item eight.
The information that should have gone with this resolution is under the F five fifteen.
I see, I see, I see, I'm sorry, apologize.
Bernie?
I'm gonna pass this around, there are four pieces of paper there, you're welcome to take one of each, and then, okay, so it's not...
The documents are under tonight's meeting, under Planning Committee for fiscal year fifteen budget. Do we have a microphone, so everybody can hear, and do we have it on the screen? We need to make sure everybody sees it.
Which, which document do you want people to be seeing on the screen?
Uh, we're gonna talk about all of them, they're coming around, they're also on Board Docs, those are extra copies at the end of the table, we're gonna talk about all the documents. They're updated versions of everything you've seen before. I don't know if it's on the screen.
It can be on that one, I think.
Is it?
It, it isn't up there, it needs to just be clicked on.
I think Paul's working on it.
Yeah, that, the question is, which of the five documents does Keith want up for people to be seeing?
Well, David will tell us which one is gonna start, he'll do the explanation, and he can tell us which screen, what he wants on the screen.
Paul, the tax document.
But please make sure the audience can see, 'cause we have it on our Board Docs, they do not, and we have hard copies.
No, I, I set this way, I think John has it to me.
Thanks, just a little bit, I'll get it.
Sounds like we have some action here.
Okay, so we are looking here at the Tax Impact worksheet, and this is a, a page that summarizes many of the things, or perhaps you could say the whole budget is summarized here, the revenues, the expenditures, the student enrollment, tax impact, it's all on this one page, very densely, uh, and it compares multiple years, so it's, it's a very rich resource. And I will draw your attention to, uh, first of all, the financial goal, the Board set the financial goal of six point nine percent increase in the education spending per equalized pupil. The budget as it is tonight is at three point one percent, it's a significant drop on the per pupil spending. Uh, the tax rate is down at nine point nine percent from fourteen or twelve point four, depending on which version you were looking at previously. So this, this represents a significant, uh, amount of effort to try and, uh, be responsive to community and other concerns about the size of the budget, and to, to be responsible. Uh, that's the big picture. Um, over on the right here, you will see the items that are included in the budget in summary form. First of all, there's the one point two million of the FY thirteen deficit, that's included in, in the amount of new expenditures down here of two point four eight nine million dollars, so about half of it is paying off the deficit from two years ago. In addition to that amount, there is an amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to, uh, to come at the FY fifteen cost of FY fourteen program, so just rolling it over into next year, what would it cost? Um, it's five hundred and sixty-three thousand. Uh, the, then there are the three areas of Board Goals, the ITC, the technology and, and the, uh, facilities, increase of six hundred and seventeen thousand, uh, this number hasn't changed here, diversity and equity, thirty-one thousand more, teaching and learning continues to be revised, it's been seen in a negative number before, but here we got back into the black territory, uh, in response to concerns of the community that was, have often said throughout tonight, as well as in other meetings, don't let's take away from student contact, and that's reflected here, that we've gone from negative one hundred thousand, negative five hundred thousand, to positive seventy-eight thousand, some significant work put in there. There is one aspect that, uh, for, that maybe is all troubling for some, but in the interests of transparency, I want to bring it to your attention, uh, this number here has changed, both the expenditures and the revenues for FY fourteen has changed, based on a requirement from the state that we, uh, desist from our past practice of recording deficits as negative revenue, and recording them as positive expenditures. Net effect is to increase the expenditure and to increase the revenues by unequal amounts, so the education spending hasn't changed. That has a very, uh, significant impact on these percentages that we're seeing up here, because the base for the percentage is one point six one five million more than it was the last time you looked at it, it ends up with a result of a three point nine percent spending increase, whereas before we'd be seeing something like a seven point three, seven point seven. I draw your, that to your attention, for those of you who have a mind for finances, you know, it become apparent to you, for those who are not, you'll probably be mystified, and some of you who are suspicious in character will think I'm trying to pull them all over your eyes, but remember, I told you first. So that is a complicated piece of this, but it does end up with a three point nine percent spending increase, which is significantly about half of what it was previously.
David?
He's over here.
I'm sorry, I wonder, I'm confused, I can't really see this, and I think, I sort of have a mind for finance, would you mind doing one more time, maybe trying some different kinds of words?
Do you have the hard copy, we got hard copies?
Yes, I have the hard copy right there, I was trying to look over here and not see it.
So, so to, to get the, the hard copy tied, the three point nines at the top?
Yeah, and, yeah, I had a hard time following the first number you started with.
So, the spending, the spending increase has been reduced from seven point three, seven point five percent to three point nine percent, and the, and the, the explanation that I was giving for it is based on the requirement by the state that we no longer record deficit, handling the deficit from a prior year as a negative revenue. If you look at our annual report, you'll see that we had revenues in FY fourteen that were sixty-two point six nine nine, or something like that, um, and that included a negative one point six one five million, so we took out the negative revenue and put it down as they require us to do in expenditures. So the expenditures went up by one point six one five million dollars, and the revenues, because the negative revenue was taken off, they also rose by the same amount, so the net difference between them, which is what the education spending amount is, is the same fifty-four that we saw in our annual course.
Okay.
I just wanted to explain that, because that might not be obvious to, to many people. So again, because the percentage increase is, is based on this number, and this number has gone up, that's, that's why the percentage has, one of the reasons why the percentage has dropped. It also reflects that there have been some significant pieces of work done over here in terms of fine tuning the, uh, the program.
But we're also looking at a change of two million dollars less in the education spending line, line three from the, what we saw a week ago.
Right.
Because the, because of the way in which we are r- recording, uh, expenditures and revenues in, in fifty, as opposed to saying half.
Got it, got it, got it, yep.
Is there anything else on this tax impact sheet before we go into, well, what's behind this?
Yes, could you just talk again about the revenue, you said you increased the revenue accordingly?
Yep.
But it, was it general fund revenue?
Yes.
State general fund revenue?
The biggest part.
You mean state general fund revenue?
No, this is our general fund revenues.
Our general fund revenues.
So they went from eight point eight million, something like that, up to ten point...
Does, does he, can he control that? Can he?
I'll just...
Okay. David, we do have this one up, if it's easier for people to see up front.
Yeah, it's easy.
I mean, your, your light will work.
Where do you want it to be?
You can stay there.
Up front would be helpful to me, please.
Up front.
You need the other one. When you point there, I'll point here.
This was an example of cutting down on our administrative support.
You can't sit here, they've got all the knitting going on over there.
Any more questions about the tax impact sheet?
Probably lots.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to something which we haven't seen before, and that's the revenue sheet. Clearly the revenue is an important part of the budget.
I'm sorry, what was the, so the nine point nine changed from what, what was it before?
It was fourteen percent.
It was fourteen percent before, and was that the last, that was the last one we actually saw, that was all new changes to get down to nine point nine, okay? But then, I think you're gonna talk through this, but the bottom here is still fifteen percent at the actual home state tax rate, is that correct?
No.
Why does it say it?
It's fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents.
Instead of twenty-one cents.
Okay, so it comes down to one point six seven instead of one point seven three nine, or something that was before?
Yep. So let's move to revenue for revenue.
I'm sorry, and that translates into how much, that translates into, into how much per assessed value? For a hundred thou, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, it's a hundred thousand times that number.
It's a hundred fifty-one dollars.
For a hundred thousand dollars.
For a hundred thousand dollars.
It wasn't two twenty-four.
Two thirty-one, I think, yeah.
Two thirty-one, yeah.
Let's move, let's move to the revenue.
Again, that's happening across the state now, I mean, all districts are getting this change.
Well, yes.
I mean, it's all, everybody's getting this today.
Yes, and some of these changes are internal assumption changes.
I just wanna confirm that really nothing has changed from the state, because the, you're still assuming the most recent information from the Tax Commissioner, which has not changed, the base education amount below line five, the base tax rate below line six, um, everything else that we have down below, the equalized pupils are the same, common level appraisal is the same, there are change, where your changes are occurring are between general fund expenditures, general fund revenues, and our net education spend, and so this is all things that you are saying are changes that, as you've been working on, have come in, okay, in the local budget, okay?
Just as a, a point of comparison, I heard yesterday that South Burlington was looking at something like a three percent increase in expenditures, with a fourteen percent, a troubled fourteen percent tax rate increase, and, and for those who... And, and for those who may not be familiar with the numbers, why would two districts have the same spending but a different tax rate increase? And the answer is probably in the equalized pupil counts. So if they've got a declining home set, and the C L M will be another factor too.
One more question, um, David, so, so these changes that are seeming very positive for us on this sheet primarily are the result of the accounting change, is that correct?
No, not primarily, it's one effect, and you'll see the changes as we go through the next pages.
And then the other factors would, should be summarized though on the expenditure change page, is that right?
Right.
So those are the two basic areas, the accounting difference and this, these expenditures, there's not something else that you guys did or worked on that created this, just those two things, okay, thank you.
On the revenue, the revenue page that you see here from the first side, we are continuing to assume a flat amount of high revenue, though that is a moving target as we speak. The city is wanting to reduce that. Tuition increases, uh...
Bernie has a question. You, let, let him finish the sheet maybe, and then save the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, small increase in the techi- technical center allocated cost that we received as a local source of revenue. Otherwise, there's not much change in the local sources. State sources, these two lines here together constitute the education spending amount. So that's why I call it the education spending adjustment. The state has different terms for it, but it's basically, education spending is the sum of that line and the second line. The second line is a portion of education spending which the state skims off and sends off to the tech center to facilitate their cash flow at the beginning of the school year. And it's part of our education spending. Uh, construction aid, I'm anticipating will go away, it was small to begin with, but it was, that's sent to us, it was an interest payment on the construction aid that was owed to us from prior construction. And I, I, I believe in FY fifteen, there'll be no more outstanding construction aid owed to any school district in the month. The state took out two bond issues in consecutive years to be able to retire the construction aid backlog. Uh, the numbers here for, uh, the special education revenues are taken straight from the state, uh, fall, which they sent out to every district, based on the, uh, service plan that was submitted for the, the upcoming year. So I didn't, um, tinkering with it, I was, I just reported them as they were sent to us. My sense is that we're gonna get more than that, but I decided to leave it as it was. And there are some miscellaneous items down here, which includes such things as technical center transportation reimbursement. When we send students to the Essex Tech, and we incur the cost of their transportation, we get reimbursed that from the state. That's one of the items. Another, another item that's in there is a forty thousand dollar item for, uh, state reimbursement for state-placed students who are not special education students. Uh, usually that, usually that doesn't take in that, in that area, but that's kind of that. And indirect cost reimbursement, those are, uh, share of, uh, administrative costs for administering, uh, the federal grants, mostly Title I, IDAB, and grants like that, those are the two big ones. Um, and as you can see, the number's going down as our federal grants go down, and, uh, we are not yet aware of what, we haven't yet applied for an indirect cost rate for FY fifteen, that'll be done once we've got FY fourteen data to work from. So, uh, it's a little conservatively reduced. So the bottom line is that our revenues go up by the same, two point four eight nine million, that's our expenditures, I did imagine. Uh, and that's the revenue picture. Bernie had a question.
Uh, pilot funds, so we only got half of the incurred here?
No, we haven't received a penny of it yet.
But, uh, we...
We budgeted for half, budgeted for about a half.
And then next year, we're budgeting for the same.
Right.
And then the other thing is, I just, we spoke to this last night, we were talking about, uh, following up on impact fees from the city, just to...
Yeah, the city has not sent a city impact fee, it's been like thirteen, yes?
Okay.
A little behind in the recovery. And questions on the revenue? Now, let's move...
I'm gonna ask another question. So if a constituent looked at you and said, can you show me on this revenue sheet where the money from the state is that is going down, where would I point?
You wouldn't see it on the sheet because this is the general fund. We, we, I think, I think the constituent was probably talking about federal funds going down maybe, or does she mean?
No, I'm, I'm asking about the effect of the higher base tax rate and so forth. And that chunk of money, which on the other sheet pulls us from nine point nine to, to sixteen, you know, to one point six seven, so where is that reflected on the sheet?
Hmm?
How do I show that to someone that, that it's gone down?
Can, Miriam, can I ask if I can maybe clarify, 'cause I think I know what you're asking, but I think it's...
Sure.
You're asking about the tax effect that comes from the interplay between the base tax rate at the state level and the, what is it, the base funding amount, what is that, uh, the...
Yes, and where, where that shows up here.
Yeah, base education amount. That won't show up on what we see as revenue, because that's an effect of those two numbers being set. So it has more to do with them increasing the tax rate more than the base funding amount in percentages, but that is not something that's gonna show up in a nu- in a revenue number, it's more of an interplay in setting the tax rate.
Right, but I, I really feel like an idiot here, but this, this represents the money that we are getting to pay for our schools, correct?
We're getting more, not less.
Okay, I, I understand that, but percentage-wise, somehow it's gone down, right, or no? We're, we're getting an absolute amount more, but relatively, it's going down, right, because of the changes in the tax rate, 'cause the tax rate is going up. So I just, I mean, this paints a pretty rosy picture, it says we're getting more money than we got last year.
Yes.
Which is true.
Yes.
Okay. But I just, which line would be, would this line, the education spending adjustment, be the line of the chunk of money that we're getting? That's the result of the calculations on the other page?
Yes. So that, that number's up because we said we wanted to spend more, and we're paying a higher tax.
Okay, so I could say to someone here, this is the number, yes, it's going up, but this is where that calculation comes from, it turns into this amount of money. That's correct, you're not just saying yes so that I will stop talking.
The way you just said that sounded correct.
Did that sound correct?
Yeah, I don't know if, if you meant what you just said, but it sounded correct.
I was, sorry, I was doing something else, Miriam, I had...
Say it again, Miriam.
Okay, my constituent says, oh, here are the revenues, how much are you getting from the state? Which is this complicated formula, and I say, oh, last year we got forty-nine million, this year we're getting fifty-three million, is that correct?
That is correct.
So our overall money from the state is going up?
Yes.
But that is because, that is because we are spending more per equalized pupil. We have a higher tax rate, the money goes over, out to the state education fund, and then they send us back the higher amount. That's the amount that comes back. Um, but that's just the education grant.
Right.
Okay, the one thing that I am also hearing is we have additional, um, monies that we do get back from the state
Right.
which come below, so it's a little bit different, but that are based on the education spending. Yeah, the numbers that you're talking about are correct there.
Okay.
Just a second, Liz has a question as well.
So, but what's important to understand about that is the money from the state is increasingly property taxes, not general fund revenue. So that's why it's not really helpful to get more money from the state, 'cause we're all just paying more.
It's, uh, basically one-third, two-thirds, two-thirds from property tax, one-third from general fund.
So the, so the legislature is advocating on their responsibility to fund education from the general fund because they're funding more things like prisons, and we're getting, we're paying in our property taxes.
It has changed.
Right, 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 right. So i- is that a two-thirds, one-third of that fifty thousand, is that pretty much the way it goes?
Yeah, and it's be... Well, it's becoming even more than that, it's like twenty percent, general fund in the next year, and...
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Liz.
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna ask a dumb question then, too.
There are no dumb questions.
Yeah, there are, there are dumb questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, there are dumb questions. What color's your shirt's a dumb question, right, that's, it doesn't help us. Um, so, um, this is the, last week, you said that, you know, for whatever reason, we, the budget goes down and down and down and down, and it, it gets level funded for, for, for next year, no new, no new money, same. And you said at that point, that would, with no new money, the exact same expenditures from last year carried over to, to FY fifteen, you said it would still, uh, result in an eight percent actual tax increase, and that's all from this, this change in the state formula.
It, there was in that report, there was nine hundred and forty-eight thousand and ninety-three dollars of additional expenditures. It wasn't, wasn't true to say that I said there was level.
For whatever, whatever it is by charter, there's, there's some sort of, for, for, okay, I, I, I'm sorry if it was, yeah, but whatever would happen by charter. And that would, that's an eight percent, but the, the vast majority of that, seven of that eight percent, is from the change in the state formula.
And could I just make one more comment, just to explain perhaps to the public why we're asking these questions? That this is the first time that I've seen the revenue put in this, I have not to this date, in all the time that we've been doing the budget and talking about things, ever seen a revenue sheet that looks like this. So I apologize for my simplistic questions, but I am trying to understand it. And it is, um, difficult to see this for the first time tonight and to be asked to make decisions, so I'd just like that on the record, thank you.
Be ready to move on. So the, uh, the next, the next one is a pr- a program goal. And what this does, it, 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 uh, reviews the previous three drafts and includes some additional amounts of, in draft four, which is the current draft. And, uh, to give the...
It might be helpful to mention, like, draft one was back in, what, this month, and, you know, just to give some context.
Draft one was November twenty-ninth, draft two, I believe, was probably the first, I don't recall if it was the planning meeting or the first budget hearing.
But early December.
But draft three was the second budget hearing, and draft four is tonight.
Okay.
I don't think it impressively for the peanut gallery that you use and microphones is, 'cause we really can't hear you back here.
Yes, we, one of the places we don't spend a lot of money is on the microphone system. We don't have microphones, Jeff is constantly running around trying to adjust microphones to who's speaking.
Thank you.
So, uh, we'll do our best and just let us know, but, um, generally, at this end of the table, Alan, David, and I will have one, um, and as you guys are speaking, the big microphones on your table actually belong to RETN, and they do not project your voice. It's the small microphones that project your voice, so you might have to share them, go back and forth.
So can you repeat those drafts again?
I believe that the first draft was the, um, well, draft one was the first finance meeting right after Thanksgiving. Draft two, I don't recall if it was planning, you'll have to go back to board docs, or if it was the bir- first budget hearing, but either way, it was early December. Draft three was the last budget hearing on December nineteenth, or was that last week? Draft three was last week. Uh, so draft two would have been the budget hearings in December. Draft three was last week, draft four is tonight. Um, as I had said, we, we've done some significant work as more and more information comes in.
Draft two was December sixth.
Thank you. So...
I have a question, so the first column in draft one is whatever it was, and as the negatives are posted after that, are taking away or adding to the first column?
So, the first... Yes, the first column in draft one was, at that particular meeting, we were asked to identify or bring forward the requests as identified by administration and each of the board committees under their priorities. And that's what goes in draft one, and since draft one, we either added or subtracted as we went forward. Um, and the areas in particular that are added into or adjusted for tonight are in the area of ELL needs and the community connections area, um...
Non-core academic services also.
Yeah. And non-core academic services, which, David, do you have that there? Um, which is, um, half of the library paraeducators, truing up the athletics budget, which as you know, was added to after last year's budget was put to bed, so we're putting money back in to make sure that it's carried forward. Um, making sure, one of the things that we need to do is to make sure that we do have money in there for the retirement benefits that are within the teacher contract, and also, uh, making an adjustment for the tech tuition piece. Um, that's what accounts for that large number under non-core academics.
Oh, it's the next slide, okay.
David, could you just refresh me on one other point on that page? Which was the annual capital maintenance, when we were able to reduce what our expected result was there? Is that because of more favorable interest rate that we could receive in bonding, or is it related to something else?
No, that's, that's more related to, uh, to a, a more careful analysis of what the actual cost of the bonding would be, and the primary element of that is that in the first year of a bond, you pay no principal, so it's taken out in principal.
Right, okay, right, I've, that, I understand that, I know that, that we've always had to be careful with exactly the timing and of, especially when we issue mid-year, there's some differences, okay, then, thank you.
Where are we, David? Sorry, to clarify, so the library services are under the non-core academic services, is that correct?
That's correct. Core academics would be, um, the elementary classroom, English, math, science, social studies.
Okay, so, so... Okay, so did you change, you did change that line, and does that, can you tell us?
In this proposal in front of you, yes, putting halftime...
So what, where's the library paraeducators back in? So, I'm, so what did you do, say it again, please?
To, making a change in that line to put half the para, library paraeducators K A back in for halftime.
Okay, so it's now a cut of a hundred thousand dollars instead of two hundred thousand dollars?
Basically.
Okay.
Can you flip the sheet over, Miriam, if there's a difference on each side? Can you flip the sheet over?
Okay.
If you pull library down, and now you see it's a cut of, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars versus two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Henry, thank you. Bernie?
The, uh, ELL figure, ninety-five thousand, what's that represent?
Um, it's a combination of things, it's a, um, it represents liaison services, supplies, and then the other seventy-five represents a teacher.
What about some of the things that, um, in the audience, the liaisons were speaking to about ELL needs? Where, would any of that be reflected?
Exactly what Bernie just asked, that's exactly where it would be.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that, sorry.
Bernie?
Uh, the other question is on the sequestration impact. Wouldn't we, or we probably won't, I don't, before we vote tonight, so...
Well, we probably won't, um, not before we even go to vote. Um, I did receive an email today from my organization, AESA, that was trying to give some detail. If you think this is confusing, it's even more gobbledygook. Um, the line is still that, they're trying to res- they supposedly last night still restored eighty-seven percent of the cuts, but it's still not clear if that's across the board, or eighty-seven percent of the total pot, and the pots differ. Um, generally, you know, we're watching that closely, and generally, we don't know for sure until May or even into June. So therefore, we did not make any change in this because of our fear of what's happened the past few years.
Can I, this is gonna be a, a, a set of, a lengthy pedantic question here, but I'm really trying to understand this, because this suddenly seems too good to be true, and I don't want it to come back and bite us next year when we suddenly find out, oh, well, there were this two million dollars that we really didn't have last year that we thought we did, now we have to carry that to next year for a deficit or whatever.
I'm reading this, and, and I'm not an accountant, and this is not my strength, so, so, so please bear with me, but I'm reading this, last week, we're looking at a seven percent local increase, all right? And I'm also looking at the, the, from what we had last week, as our education spending level of fifty-eight million dollars from what was presented last week. The, the sheet that looks like this... The, the sheet that looks like this from last week. The folks out there, looks just like the one you're doing, except from last week. Now, the one I'm looking at tonight, that had been up there a minute ago, has three point nine percent increase, and our education spending has dropped down to fifty-six million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. And then I'm looking at what we're looking, what, what was just placed in front of us here, and I'm seeing five hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, or, I'm sorry, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars added additionally to the budget from last year, or from last week, but we've somehow or another have two million dollars less in spending, and the numbers aren't adding up to me. And I, I'm clear, I'm sure I'm missing something, and I, I know that my, that was simplistic, but I, I just. Fifty-eight, 'cause to me, fifty-eight million plus six hundred thousand doesn't equal fifty-six million. And that's, that's how I, that's how I'm reading it, so s- I'm obviously doing something wrong.
No, I think you're not.
So he's talking about, in last week's, the education spending was fifty-eight million, and we had all these pieces on the side. Now it's fifty-six million. With these pieces on the side, how do the numbers add up? Did I say that fairly well?
I'm not sure you said that.
Yeah, you could, you could, sure.
Remember the microphone?
Yeah. You're comparing, you're comparing the ed spending of last week and this week with those expenditure changes on the side.
And I may be looking at the wrong line, exactly.
Okay.
Right.
Right, so suddenly we're adding more money back into library services, and we're adding more money here.
But our education spending goes down by two million, I'm just wondering where that two million dollars was found.
It's cutting us down.
So that, I mean, that comes back to what you were talking about earlier, about the deficit being a negative.
It's accounting.
And, so that's a piece of it, and another piece of it is.
It's just an accounting question, issue, effectively.
Yep.
Hmm. And there are other pieces where some, uh, truing up of the budget or some further refinement of assumptions in the budget. For example, the hundred thousand dollars that we don't need to budget for principal is another hundred thousand dollars found, in a sense.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm sorry, so, and where is that reflected?
Yeah. Which principal?
Um, at, eh, on page two, no, it's not. Uh, on page three, the one that said, well, you don't know what page three is, the one that says, uh, program goals? Down at the bottom of infrastructure and facilities? Annual capital maintenance, that hundred thousand is, is there? And just so you know, this, these worksheets were being worked on up until six fifteen tonight. So, walking through it very slowly is just fine. The numbers keep improving. Um, I don't necessarily mean psychologically improving, but also, um, the analysis of the numbers, just, the data coming in just keeps improving. So that's why you're seeing it now. I gave you a hint last night that this was to come, but I didn't even know how much.
I think a lot of us have a lot of questions, so forgive me if you're gonna get to this, or if you already answered it and I wasn't clear. But when I'm looking at draft three point two, non-core academic services at a cut of three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Tonight's draft is four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars cut, but we just reinstated fifty percent of the para. Actually, that's not even part of it. So, what, what sixty-seven thousand dollars just were removed that. Am I reading that correctly?
I think, I think the answer to that question is that in reviewing the amount of cuts that were identified for the library paras, they had been, it had been priced too high. We reviewed the pricing.
With actual people?
With actual people. We had, we'd assumed that the total cost of paras was four hundred thousand dollars. And it turns out that it's, uh, it's much, much more.
Two forty?
Two forty. So there was, there was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars there that goes, goes back.
And something comparable is there for curriculum training as well? Because curriculum training went up fifty thousand dollars, or went, is fifty thousand dollars bigger cut than the last draft?
Can I, can I make a suggestion? It's up to you.
I'm not sure where you see that, Rebecca. If you can help me, I can, I can.
Yeah, tell us what.
I can answer you.
Okay, so I'm comparing, trying to compare apples to apples. The budget draft three point two XLS that we have with budget draft four point O.
Page two of the.
Just backside.
Oh, okay.
Liz, do you wanna?
Well, what I wanted to suggest is that, um, why don't we go through the budget? We have yet to go through the budget, so why don't we just take a step back and go through the budget and talk about what the changes have been from draft one to draft two to draft three to draft four for each of the line items that you changed? So that would get to Rebecca's question, and it might get to other questions that commissioners still have, but why don't you just do the whole thing and go through each draft by budget category?
Okay. To answer this question quickly, it's a science coach. And the additional money that I needed to find to cut, that we have a science coach position that was, um, was cut, so it was an additional cut. So, I, I, I'm wondering, eh, with Liz's suggestion, I mean, this, this is kind of the frustration, I, in a way, that happened at the December meeting is you kind of, you kind, could you hear it once, and then come back with all the questions, and we'll clarify everything? But then it's, then you have a big picture as opposed to jumping around. Is that all right? Can, can we give it a try?
No, I, I hear what you're saying, because of the budget hearing where, or when we got all the answers at the last, like, last Monday, that we could have had.
All I'm suggesting is if you go through line by line, people could just jot their questions down while you're going through it.
Yeah.
And then at the end, ask, ask away.
Well, and that sounds like a big picture question, too. I mean, that sounds like what she's proposing to me.
I, I'm, I'm saying exactly what Liz is saying.
We're all, we're all on the same page.
Okay.
I recommend that.
So start by telling us which page you're gonna take us through.
Sure.
So here we are with the, uh, the budget, divided up by major categories, functions.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, sorry. So we, here, here we have a two, a two A, a two A.
But don't say the P's.
Can't win, babe, can't win.
A two A each, drop the, drop the, better.
Yeah.
A two A each, summary of the budget, uh, by major categories, which are functions. So the first function is regular education instruction, these are all instruction areas. Um, and in that, go to the right, if you can get the crossbar. So, what, what we see in the right column over here, at, uh, draft four, is basically the impact of the ELL teacher.
Can you get it back in?
That's what that is. Down here, in athletics instruction, that is the hundred thousand dollars added back in to true up the commitment that's already been made for this year and continuing into next year to restore the athletic level of programming to FY thirteen level of programming. Here is being, in FY fourteen, it will be seen in the revised budget, not the adopted budget, because the adopted budget was already approved before the board acted in the spring. But here we're getting it proactively into the, into the, to become the approved budget. So that's the hundred thousand there. Down here, in social services, that reflects, uh, support for community connections. Down here, in library services, this is the amount of money that goes in to come up with the end result of a cut of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Because it was originally overestimated.
Overestimated, uh, four hundred thousand dollars for all eight, uh, elementary paraeducators in the library. That four hundred thousand ought to be no longer a number, so this is the, the number that it's calling four here. That brings us back to the real number, which is a net hundred and twenty thousand cut.
Which, which is still, we, is still getting rid of all, all eight of the, or half, half, of half of all eight.
Half, half time.
Would that be, someone said, one of the library paras said thirty hours a week, so this is cutting back to fifteen?
Yeah, uh, the middle school is actually higher, so it, we can confirm that, but it's probably cutting back to about eighteen.
Or, or is it?
I haven't really been able to get all the budget before you ask questions.
Yeah, let's hear the whole bunch, okay.
Yeah, right, jot them down. Let's keep going.
So now on the second, second page. And down here, on employee, uh, benefits at the district level, there's certain benefits that we record at the district level. And this particular one is the golden handshake, which was not ad- was found to be not adequately funded for FY thirteen, so eighty thousand was split in there. Now, we don't know what that is, because people haven't yet retired, so we don't know who, who's funding it.
Where is it? On the side.
Employee benefits.
Yeah, but which one? Okay.
Employee benefits, definitely.
Okay.
But that is an estimate of what it might be. And that's it for draft four. There's no changes in draft four.
So ultimately, this draft restores fifty percent of the library paraeducators.
Could you speak up, please, so everybody can hear what this dra- what this new budget really, um, gives people? What the, what the real changes are?
Ultimately, this draft, eh, restores fifty percent of the library paraeducators, one ELL teacher, some money in, um, community connections, trues up the athletics budget. Um, it does not restore Spanish. Um, did I cover everything? And, and trues up the amount of money needed and benefits.
What are the reductions?
In, you mean from all the drafts?
All the drafts, that's right.
I need your detail sheet, I can't answer that after. Or maybe I can. So we are. Um, it also includes adding, um, an elementary teacher, as you know. Um, it's one ELL teacher, but not two. It does include the lia- liaison and, right? And surprise line. Um, in the community connections area, there is thirty-five thousand dollars for us to determine how best to spend it. Yes. Um, it continues to support, um, athletics. It continues to look at different ways of gaining revenue in the area of after-school that would offset the local budget, and a new model of legal services that would also reduce the local budget. Um, it does continue, it does cut, a science coach, the social studies, time coach. And looks at some reductions at the high school that, uh, Avi and I are, are still having discussions about that have to do with class enrollment, class course designs. It includes the sequestration impact, and keeps those classroom teachers and the math and literacy coach within. It adjusts the diversity equity budget, which includes an addition for, uh, the additional thirty-one thousand for recruitment and HR support. It does include, um, in the infrastructure and facilities, as it did, it's, there's no changes, so it still includes the computers, uh, uh, non-personnel facilities increase um, of seventy-five thousand. Um, the planning money, uh, still two hundred thousand for Burlington High School and Edmonds, and the change in legal services, and we already discussed the debt service change. Do you wanna keep going or ask questions?
Yeah, I had a question about something you said. I, I know, I don't have to be recognized, but I just.
I recognize you, Patrick.
So you said this does cut, uh, part-time social studies coach, this current budget?
Yes, it does. Yes. With, um, the diversity equity office fully staffed now, and having, um, Deverne on board, we believe that we can bring a lot of that work in, within the existing staffing.
Then I, I have to say, that's, that's the, the, the one place where I've seen the diversity and equity initiatives really translate into curriculum that kids are, are engaged in. And I, and I would be, I would be devastated if that does not continue to happen because we have second graders and first graders who are talking and asking smarter questions than seventh graders and eighth graders about diversity because they have the language given there. Boy, if, if, if we don't continue to build a curriculum that allows kids to have this and integrate it into what we have, which is what the social studies, um, coach was doing, we're, we're, we're really doing a disservice. It's great to do all this work with teachers, but eventually, it's gotta trickle down into, into the actual learning that takes place in the classroom.
We believe that these positions will go straight to teachers in curriculum. Okay, where are we, David?
I guess, I've got a big picture question from, that goes back to the impact on tax rate sheet. When we rolled forward, when you were showing us a rolled forward budget in the most recent sheet prior to this one, you showed that the current programs were going to cost us three point three seven seven two seven three million to roll forward. This particular sheet shows five hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-four, uh, dollars, which is the bulk of the difference, I mean, in just sort of where it comes. Why now does it look like it costs us two point eight million dollars less to roll forward the current program than what was in the prior?
There are, there are two main components to that. One is that, is that the amount of one point six million dollars, uh, the prior year deficit, which, which shows in, writing the current program into next year. This year, we had one point six million dollars of expenditures, and next year, we would not have any expenditures on that item. But in addition to that, we have the one point two, so that's, 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 uh, that's one piece of it. And the second piece of it is that in the process of, uh, reviewing some of the changes in how we record our expenditures and getting them more aligned with state requirements, uh, there was an amount for, what amounts to internal tuition charges between the high school and the on-top and, and Horizons that was transferred down to a fund transfer line as it, as it needs to be. Um, but where it was originally located in instruction had not been removed. Upon review, it was seen, and so many dollars, basically, was found, and then one misstep, that was found. So that's, that's how, that's how it was.
Is that a Munus discovery? Is that because of Munus?
It's kind of part of that rollover and that analysis, yes.
It, it actually goes back long before Munus.
Okay.
We have a number of practices in the district that are shortcuts that have been taken for years here that we are beginning to regularize.
David, could you tell us what the, according to this draft four, what would be the budget amount that we would have to have on the ballot?
My understanding of the charter as we have it, and it's made, the way we, ways to be determined in the past would be the number sixty-six point eight seven one two eight eight.
Wait. Sixty?
Sixty-six million.
General fund expenditures length.
It's right there.
Oh, okay.
Eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight.
Correct.
Meredith, representing the committee, I think, has a motion. She'd like to go forward, to, to go forward.
Okay, let me get, it's, oh, okay. Back to the motion. Oh, boy. And where are we at? Which meaning? One, two, three, sorry. Maybe, it's on the, yeah, it's right, thank you. Okay. So, and here's the, where's that six? Right here. Six, okay. So, the motion, um, so I can just change that amount? Okay. Like that?
Because that amount reflects what we talked about, it's just a different number.
What, yeah, okay. Motion to increase the budget to sixty-six million, eight hundred and. Motion to increase the budget to sixty-six million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to reflect the community's willingness to support quality education and the superintendent, and that the superintendent be given the flexibility to make decisions over the next several months as she continues to hear feedback from the community and monitors federal and state actions.
Is there a second? Bernie? Just for clarification, the motion that's been made is the motion to put this amount on the ballot in March. Um, would the maker of the motion like to speak to it first?
Well, I think this is a reflection of a process that we started this year that hasn't always been perfect, and I think you've heard, heard a lot of board members speak to that. But it was an attempt to start the budget process earlier in the year, in August, because we continued, and I think you heard the public speak to this, we continue to run into issues in the eleventh hour, where we all, um, the public wants us to cut the budget, add programs, delete programs, um, and then board members are fighting for their favorite programs or not, and I've been on the board for five years, I have seen, I have, um, fought for programs time and again. I have fought for most of the programs, some of which end up, are reflected in additions or cuts this year. Um, I think almost every program I've heard someone speak about in the audience, I have fought to keep back in the budget and succeeded at that. So the process was designed to get the community starting early on about ways to, um, look at our whole budget. I don't think that it was necessarily fully successful this year. Um, I think other board members might speak to that, but I think it was an attempt to move us in a direction that, um, we could start making changes in the way we look at our budget process. Um, this motion is a reflection of that, because what I have learned is that throughout the budget season, you, there are all these moving parts, and, you know, for new board members probably are feeling very frustrated right now with all these pieces of paper that we're looking at at, you know, nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. Um, but this happens every year, we continue to get things pouring in from the state. Sometimes it's late after the budget is passed, and, you know, in April, um, we'll hear, you know, there are federal government changes, or Congress has decided to cut this or that, and then we have to put it back in the budget. The other thing we tend to run into is, you know, suddenly our kindergartens are exploding, we need to add teachers. So, I feel like it's really hard sometimes to zero in on a budget at any given moment. Um, now, this is not to say that I personally want to give the superintendent carte blanche, I want us to continue to monitor what is happening in the finance committee and all the other committees, um, because we've heard from the community, we have our district goals and our, um, you know, school board goals, and we need to honor what we are hearing within those goals for the community. I also think this came out of what happened last year, um, when we were desperately on the finance committee trying to save one through six Spanish, and at the last minute, probably at ten o'clock at night, we went against Jeannie's recommendation about a cut in sports and co-curriculars, and we increased it to fifteen percent. That ended up being voted on, and then a month later, the public suddenly realized what had happened, and we heard loud and clear, um, that that was not something that they wanted. And, um, I feel like, uh, you know, that, every year we get that, where the board is responding to the loudest voices, and I'm not saying anything negative about the sports and co-curriculars folks, because I've, I passionately believe that that was not a good, you know, choice on our part. But I also was struggling with trying to save one, six Spanish at that point, and here we are again. So, I think we are ha- we're hearing a lot of things from the public and other board members about more creative ideas about managing a school budget, and I invite us all to continue those conversations, so I've rambled enough now.
Liz?
Um, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to the resolution. So, um, what I wrote down that you said was motion to increase the budget to sixty-six million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to reflect the community's willingness to support quality education and giving the superintendent flexibility to make decisions over the next several months, I would add under the following guidance from the board. Um, and then I have a list that I'll read, number one, forego any increase in central office administrative salaries. Number two, eliminate at least one central office position. Number three, restructure other central office positions to generate savings that are transferred directly to kids in the classroom through reclassification of positions. Number four, spread cuts equitably according to student enrollment needs, thus having to avoid the elementary schools taking the brunt of the cuts. And number five, should federal sequestration cuts be restored, the funding shall be returned to the classrooms first in accordance with the board's goals and priorities. Ending with, as the superintendent continues to hear feedback from the community, and I'd like to add, and school employees and monitors federal and state actions.
Uh, wow, um.
She's gonna send it, right?
I sure will.
So it can be put up on the screen.
Okay.
Who does she send it to, Paul?
Who wants it?
I'm not sure yet.
Can I, well, well, first, okay, so. Liz, you have asked Meredith if this would be friendly.
Yes, we have.
Okay, and it's, Meredith? And I guess Bernie as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Liz.
Should I send it to you?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, what's the best way to get it on the screen? Oh, sorry, Jay.
Jay Bauer.
There you are. I have to put the last part of the language in.
So, Meredith?
Yep.
Want to change that until it comes through, because it just seems a little invasive? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't want to see everyone's email. Or maybe we do.
Just change the frame that's showing perhaps, if you know.
It's public record anyway.
Yes, I know, it's a courtesy.
Okay.
I'm actually, I, I would like to kind of wait until we can see the language up, so that you can look at the language, and, I mean, to see what's been proposed here for, because it's being proposed as friendly, I want to make sure that.
Did you send it?
Sent it to Jay.
Can I ask for a clarification, Liz?
Yep.
What, what's central office staff, what, central office salaries, are those people that are in that building, is that, I'm just?
There is.
It, it essentially means all the positions that are not union protected, under contract, so the employees that serve.
Could I, could I clarify that, because what you just said is not what I heard.
Sure, yeah. Okay.
So what I hear as central office staff are the directors and administrative assistants that exist at central office that support different, different programs in the district. When you say anyone who's not in a contract, that's all person, personal services areas.
Right.
And that could include liaisons, it could include, um, after-school site coordinators, it could, it, it's a much larger.
Yeah, I meant, this, the admin- administration and central office.
You meant, you meant this. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Supervisors or?
Directors, that's all.
Director and administrators. Director and, and administrators.
Ben? Okay, sorry, Ben?
So Liz, when you're saying, under the following guidance from the board, is that a directive or is that an advisement? Are we directing a cut, an elimination of a position, or are we advising that?
Yes, no, that's a directive. So I can speak a little bit about, um, where this came from?
Um, it's been proposed as a friendly amendment, I need to have the maker of the amendment and the seconder, and I've been trying to give them some time to process here.
Okay, so they have to accept it.
It's been proposed as friendly because it doesn't change the number, but it's asking for cuts, and then, I'm, I'm trying to reframe this, it's asking for a, a cut, it's acting, asking for a change of an assumption, a few other things. It's not changing the overall budget number, and then it asks for certain things to be done with that money, basically, and I, I just want to make
So, um.
These things are friendly, but need to be considered by the maker of the amendment and the seconder.
Yep.
Seconder, that's kind of where it is, and it, it can be spoken to, uh, but I want to make sure that it.
So perhaps the last sentence, um, would say, should, um, the impact of these actions return funds or, or free up funds that changes that number, those funds shall be restored to the classroom first, in the order of the board's intended budget priorities and goals. So instead of.
I understand that.
Okay.
And I, I think, do you want me to speak to it, or because it's Liz, should Liz speak?
Well, I, I guess what I'm asking you is, as you sit and process, if the, the number of the budget hasn't changed, but she just added a bunch of language to your motion.
Right. What, do you want me to?
Just a second, uh, let me, Kathy, you, you want to say something, you have the, the.
Yeah, to, um, cut a central office position, that you would have to know which program, no?
If I understood the, I, I think that what I understood.
We're not discussing the motion, right, until she's accepted it, right?
Yeah, I, w-.
Otherwise, the number knows that.
Once she accepts it, we're done talking about it, it's all been into it, we can continue to discuss in the context of the.
Right.
Well, a point of order.
Yeah.
Do, do the motion maker and the seconder need to accept the friendly amendment before it's discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought I.
And then it would be discussed in terms of the full motion.
But can we discuss that before we?
Accepted.
I, I, I mean, this is, if it's not, if it's not accepted as friendly, then you would need to make it as a regular motion, that can be discussed as a motion. You're trying to get it put into the full immediately without, without discussing it as an.
Right, and I'm suggesting that, with, with the point you just raised, the language on the bottom needs some work, so it's not quite a full-blown.
Well.
I under. Right.
Can we, as the maker and the seconder, change the friendly amendment?
Yeah, but. Maker and seconder. You could say to Liz, I would accept it as friendly with if it read like this. Bernie?
I, I don't know how to rewrite it, but eliminate at least one central office position, but then restructure other central office positions to generate savings, that, uh, two dollars, a thousand dollars? Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to get that a bit more structured. Because it, it's very big, you know, I mean, it, it really means nothing.
So, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy, I'm open to modifying it, um, if you have thoughts, I, uh, thought that through, reclassification of positions would indicate the, um, direction to go in.
Meredith?
That, that has a meaning in human resources terms.
Meredith?
I hear it as an expansion of, on eliminating at least one central office position. And the reason I see this whole section as friendly is because I feel like there are so many moving parts in a budget, and we've already heard about many of the moving parts at the state level, and this is sort of giving direction to Jeannie to deal with those moving parts as they come through in a way that I think reflects what we are hearing, especially what Kathy Olwell said, summed up so well. Um, but what we are hearing from the community about why, why are you picking on the student services? You know, we need to be focusing elsewhere, um, in the district, and I feel like this is an attempt to do that. That as he's, as we're giving the superintendent flexibility to make changes, we're also sort of sheltering some of the programs that we hold dear that are directly affecting kids. Does that make sense? That's why I see it as friendly. I think it's a reflection of what we've heard tonight.
Just one second, Aaron, I mean, I've, because what I'm trying to, what part of, a couple of things that I've heard here, betwe- you know, I've heard something proposed by Liz to the two of you. I've heard a couple of questions about the language from the maker and the seconder. I feel like if you're going to accept it as friendly, we need to ti- you, there needs to be a tightening up of the language here, and I think we need to take care of this, or we should just put it up as a motion to add to the, directly to the, 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 and then we should be debating the motion. So I would like one of us to go one of two ways, otherwise we'll sit here spinning wheels for a while. Bernie? Uh, wait, no, okay.
Liz, could we say eliminate at least one central office position and restructure and restructure central office to generate savings better directly?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't, that's, am I supposed to say, or anything?
Well, just thinking about, Ben, I would like to.
I, I was gonna suggest, because this is a pretty critical part to us moving forward, perhaps we could take a five-minute break. People could sit down with a pencil and jot it down, come back.
And could we get it all up there, I mean, I know Liz has to edit the last sentence, so if she could.
It's up to you, but it's up to.
I, I think this is, I think, I think Ben has a very good idea, which I, I would like the proposer of the friendly amendment to, because it seems to be in a, a desire to accept it, to take a five-minute break for the proposer of the friendly amendment to get the language correct with the makers of the amendment. I think that is a good idea to take, um, to break for that. I, actually, I have a question, and I hope I can answer, can we, can we just do that, or do I need any kind of motion for? Okay, let's take five minutes.
No.
If we can declare.
Can I ask a question for Steve?
Yes, yes.
So we take a break, we come back, then we discuss the friendly amendment?
Yeah, what will happen is, they will, they will, she will say whether or not she's accepted the language, Bernie will accept.
If it's accepted, right.
If it's been accepted, then we're actually talking about the full motion, which includes that language.
And if, for example, one should want to make another friendly amendment?
Or, or not friendly.
That would happen at that point.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, if, if we could, because we've still got work to do, so.
Yeah, that was last.
Grab your snacks, let's go. As we reconvene, we, there is language backup that.
Did we get, it sent to us too, or is it just?
I'm gonna, I'm going to read this, and.
Yeah, but I can't see it as well.
Yeah, is there anybody just to like highlight it all and maybe make it like fifteen point or something like that?
And some are cut, some aren't.
That's right.
Whatever.
Okay, so. I'm going to read, the original motion is motion to increase the budget to sixty-six million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to reflect the community's willingness to support quality education and giving the superintendent flexibility to make decisions over the next several months under the following direction from the board. Forego any increase in central office administrative salaries. Restructure central office positions to generate savings that are transferred directly to instruction and curriculum through elimination or reclassification of non-support staff positions with at least one hundred thousand dollars in savings. Spread cuts equitably according to student enrollment needs, thus avoiding, thus avoid having elementary schools take the brunt of cuts. Should federal sequestration cuts be restored, the funding shall be returned to instruction and curriculum first in accordance with the board's goals and priorities. And I'm assuming since you were liking this in principle, worked on the language, that this is now accepted as friendly and is the motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I would then ask Liz, as you made the friendly amendment, was it accepted? Would you like to speak to what just was added to the motion?
Sure, thank you. Um, so the, so these items came from my experience over the past month that I think we've all had with um seeing a whole lot of trees and no forest, and having to sit through many budget hearings where people could only speak to the trees that they thought were in the forest. They never knew if the forest had those trees or not, but they thought they were in them, and thus rumors started and so and so. Um, so from my experiences, being my first year on the board, is that um we were just making this up as we went along. And I think I've heard that from other board members in the past, maybe other board members have not had that experience, but it just felt like we were trying to make this up as we went along, like we were trying to figure out what was going on. And it's just a really demoralizing way of doing the budget, and it just felt like, you know, what's the point of trying to um provide service to your community responsibly if you're not given the tools? And when you don't equip people with the tools that they need, you don't get a very well-constructed outcome. But I also, you know, learned along the way um that our city employees who are not in, protected by a union contractor, who do not have a cost of living increase, are not taking any increase this year because of the city's budget position. And, and frankly, I was really just kind of uh flabbergasted that there was a five percent increase in this, in the budget that we saw from December twelfth. And that's what I'm saying, you don't give us the tools, we don't know how to draw the conclusions, and so this is what you get. Because what we had was a twelve-page budget that had line items that I went through one by one, and as near as I could tell. And then I didn't get any response to that until today, I never even read the email I got today because I was at work all day. So we didn't get things on time, we didn't get good information, we didn't get the tools, we didn't have organized, I mean, in essence, we didn't have leadership on this. And I just find that really disappointing, given all of the resources that we put into the administration. We did not have leadership on this budget, we were not led along in a reasonable, rational way. I mean, I can't say it enough, we just were not given the tools to analyze the district's budget and do our job. And so I just think we're at this point of such frustration that even if you didn't have a five percent increase in there, all I can tell you is the rest of the city isn't taking any increase, and I don't think the district should either, particularly given the salary levels that are here. It's a way of saying, this is such a bad budget level, budget year, that, you know, we have to support what's going on in the classroom, and for those of us earning quite high salaries, we're gonna forego as a way of, you know, giving back to our kids. And I just think that's an expectation that is fair to make. So, of course, I have lots of ideas about how to do this in the future, but um I think all of this is intended to say, let's be more efficient and thoughtful going forward, and not ask the kids to, to bear the brunt of this when there are other options.
Kathy?
Um, I find I can't support this because all of the items in the list are things that you, things that should've been discussed during the budget's process. Um, and I was at the finance committee where the budget was worked on and, and was the time for these questions. I, we just restructured central office and lost two positions, one point, two positions, whatever, um, the pa- in the past budget cycle, and I'm wondering if um the administration, Genie, could tell us with, what the, what the amounts would be if this was put in place, what would we get for that? Would, would it bring back any of the direct services?
W- well.
Genie, yeah, speak to that.
Sure, thank you. Um, uh, foregoing of um salaries for the central office directors is approximately thirty thousand dollars in savings. Um, to, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure how we would reach a hundred thousand dollars in savings unless we chose not to um support a program that directly impacts kids in schools. For example, in the central office, we have a director of technology, a director of grants, special education, curriculum, H R, um, and equity, diversity, professional development, and uh recruitment, employee relations. Each one of, each one of those positions would directly impact what's happening in the schools. We did lose two positions last year and restructured this year, um. I, I, I struggle about reaching a hundred thousand dollars. Um, your last question is, um, you know, would it restore programs in the schools? Well, you know, I, I, if that's what you said to do, then we would put programs back in the schools. But in, this budget was built on the priorities and the discussions at the finance committee and the planning committee and, and all of the discussions that did take place, and I understand that, you know, being new to the budget and having a new budget process at the same time may have created a perfect storm for you, but uh where would, would those priorities begin to surface? I, um, I wasn't asked this, if I'd maybe under one more minute. Um, I have, um, I have said from the very beginning of this budget that with seventy-five percent of our funds going directly to students, we are going to be seeing some cuts in programs. If we don't change the way we're doing some of the programs, then our budgets will continue to rise. The budget proposals that were put together were an attempt to change the way we were doing things and still serve kids, and yet asking to put everything back the same way means that our budgets will continue to rise. You're up against a corner, there aren't a whole lot more places to go except back to facilities, um, back to determining if, if we don't wanna do diversity equity, back to determining if we aren't gonna have a particular program that's gonna serve kids anymore, there just isn't that much flex, there isn't any flex, um, not.
I'd, I'd just like to wrap up, I regret this by saying that this is not the, the meeting to, to make this decision.
Yeah, Kathy, yeah, yeah.
These things should've been brought up months ago, it's, it's, I don't get it.
Okay, Hannah. Linda?
Well, I, I sort of have to agree with Kathy, and I was, I'm not a member of the finance committee, but I was at the meeting the other night because I had some questions and concerns, and I think if you have questions and concerns and you're not getting your questions answered, then it behooves you to put a little energy into it and show up to the finance committee meetings and ask. Um, I also am a little concerned, if you're saying a hundred thousand dollars, that's a position. So, i- in, roughly speaking, so then what, a- and one of the things that's come up i- is diversity and equity. It's been brought up by other people, other groups, is that what you're saying in it, so come out and say it. If you wanna cut a diversity and equity person, then I think you oughta have the courage to say that, um.
I'm not saying that.
Well, I, but I understand that, but I, I, you're, 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 you're in essence saying, a hundred thousand dollars you're cutting a person. So what are you, who are you gonna cut?
Well, that is why we are having, is it okay that I respond? Uh, because I think Linda was looking right at me.
No, I'm looking up over the.
Oh.
I, it has no.
I thought you were talking to me, I didn't know what you were talking.
No, no, right over your head is a hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe you're talking to Liz.
No, I was looking up at the.
Okay, so what do you want me to say?
What, I, I mean, I'm not sure that any response is needed, that Linda has made a, a point, and if.
Okay.
I'm not putting it at anybody.
My understanding of what is, what has been said there is that central, that the direction that was put into this motion
Okay.
was to direct a hundred thousand dollars in savings from central office position, positions, and was leaving that decision to, and the way of handling that to the superintendent. Keith, are you, are you, did you want, did you have your base laying your hand out?
Yeah, okay.
Finished.
Yeah, I, I finished it.
I just wanted, what, what was the percent, that, if it's now five percent, what was the percent for central office? What, you know, the range, which we get to decide in executive session, how much, what was?
The assumption of the budget is three percent. Um, and in previous, in the past few years, the central office has been frozen, received one and a half, and received two percent.
Well, are there any central office staff, that, or central office, uh, directors that, on personal service contracts or any contracts in which you can, in which they have more than a mon- one-year contract? They would not be able to be left out?
Yes, I, I believe that we have two positions that are under contract for next year.
What are those positions?
Um, director of professional develop, uh, diversity and professional development, director of um recruitment and um employee relations.
So diversity and equity would not?
No, those two positions.
There's, they would not be, um, and what I'm saying is those two positions, we, unless we went paid off, their contract, they, they would not be, um.
Reduced.
Reduced. What, are there any other individuals that have more than one-year contract?
Me.
And your, okay, your, your salary's already been determined by the last board.
For next year.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
I think, um, I'm s- I'm, I think Liz, the tone of your voice was a little bit re- reactive, and I, I would take a positive position. I support this because we've, we've given the superintendent a two-year contract to take some, some really stiff, strong steps. I hear my constituents telling me that we need to look at central office. And the reason I'm doing this is not to react to a bad uh budget process, which was, we were making it up, but we were, what we were trying to do is not have a last-minute kind of thing that we have here. Some things surprise come out at eleven o'clock on, on the ninth. Um, and so, but I'm doing it because I think we've heard from quite a few in my area that the, uh, there's kind of a central office blossoming that we need to look at, maybe we need to do some things differently. And we just talked about the students, we are creating the wrong impression about what we're really reducing. And I think, um, everything kind of went wrong, and I, I knew taking this on, I'll take this, I'll take some responsibility as finance chair, taking on it was gonna be a new thing, we always used to be very specific, getting into weeds, and I'm not sure that's been a very good idea, this is actually doing the same thing. So I'm sort of being hypocrite here, um, supporting this, but I'm thinking that we, we do have situation, and we do have, um, a central office that I think that this, uh, could, for, for good reasons, rather than reacting to a bad process, bad leadership, but that, this is, this is the time to make some moves. And I think that what we're trying to do, Genie, support you in doing what we feel like you, you, you know you need to do. And that's why I support this.
Mary.
Um, so I'm not sure where I stand on this yet, uh, but I did wanna say that, um, you know, we had a process, um, we heard a lot from people, and tonight it was interesting to see what did get incorporated into the budget, um, from what we heard from people, but I, I heard three things from all the, the public comment I heard. I heard that people love our schools, that these are good schools, and we're doing a great job of educating kids, and we wanna keep as much as we possibly can. Even people who weren't happy with the tax rate and the budget said that. The second thing I heard were that people are not happy with the tax rate going up fifteen percent or as it is with this new revised budget, still fairly large. I heard more of that in my emails than I did in my, in the public forum, particularly tonight, but I've gotten many, many emails from people who are really, really concerned about the tax rate going up this much. Um, and I think it's important that all of us remember that it's not just homeowners who are, are hit by this tax rate, absolutely not. It's all the renters in Burlington are gonna feel this, even if they have inconsensitivity, because it's gonna go right to their bottom-line housing expense, and that's the truth. So we're fooling ourselves if we think that this tax cut is not gonna really hurt, uh, this tax increase is not gonna really hurt a lot of people. The very same families that we want good connections with, and the very same families whose kids we wanna give to, to educate. So I think we seriously need to think about ways to not just reformulate the budget, but to decrease it. That was the second thing I heard. Then the third thing I heard from people was that what we really need to do is make sure that cuts don't directly impact kids. And again, we heard that time and time again, and we can quibble with what does it mean to directly impact kids, because on some level, everything in the school district directly impacts kids. But I think we have a general idea of what that means, that means in the classroom, time with teachers. It means, you know, making sure that their, most of their day is spent learning, okay, that's what it means. So when I look at these three things, I step back and say, what does this say about what we need to do with the budget? And thi- this is where I come down. Um, I think we need to decrease the budget, so I, I, the part of this motion that talks to maintaining the budget at the, the place where it is now is uncomfortable for me. I think we need to look at the places that we can cut that don't impact kids. And unfortunately, the biggest thing for me are the specific priorities that the board put out. And if you look at some of the money, a lot of it's from I T C, and as much as I support those goals, and I'm not saying it all, I continue to support that we need a new high school, I continue to support that we want technology in the schools, although not necessarily one-to-one tomorrow. Um, I continue to support that we need to fix our schools, that we can't have kids in classrooms with the rain coming through the roof, okay? But that said, there's a, there's quite a bit of money in the budget directed at this that you can't say it directly affects kids, it's not the classroom costs. So I would, I am thinking that what would make this, this feel better to me is if we as a board said, you know, everyone has to tighten their belt, and we need to tighten our belt too. We can have these priorities, but we can't necessarily have them today, and we can't necessarily have them tomorrow. We need to look at these priorities, given the financial climate, in a slightly um more measured way. For example, uh, I would suggest that we don't need two hundred thousand dollars in the I T C budget, or in the budget for the high school right now. One thing about this, uh, high school offering is that if it's gonna happen, it's gonna be jointly done with the city. There is no way, absolutely no way, that the public is gonna support a forty-million-dollar bond offering in a few years if the city is not one hundred percent behind it. Not only that, the city should be working with us, we should be looking at a strategic plan for the city that says what are the new buildings that we need to build over the next couple of years? And the school has to be high on that list, and I think it would be, because people do value the schools and do realize we need something. I think we're premature to be spending two hundred thousand dollars right now to move this project forward. I think we need to spend the next year on this project, being more thoughtful, working with the city, trying to quietly generate more support in the community. And then, then go ahead and spend some money on the next phase of the actual. and then, then go ahead and spend some money on the next phase of the actual design. So, for me, that's an area we, we can step back on. I also think with the one-to-one computing, that we, we can step back, for example, there are options. We don't necessarily have to buy seniors iPads next year. The seniors haven't had them, it's unfortunate for them, but that wasn't part of the original plan. Maybe seniors don't get iPads next year, that will reduce the budget a little bit. Maybe, God forbid, we do something, this was not my idea, but I think it's a clever one, where instead of buying the ninth graders new iPads, we recycle the ones from the eleventh graders, and those kids got iPads for two years, and the reason I say this, the reason I say this isn't exactly affecting in the class instruction is we don't know yet what the effect of those iPads is. We do not have good data to find out if those iPads are helping our kids learn. It seems like they are, but they've only been in the school for two years, so maybe we need to look at this more as a pilot study, as opposed to jumping in before we know. So, I appreciate what you did, Liz, and I do support, um, the central office staff changes and the other things that are up here. Um, I would like to, though, offer an amendment, uh, I don't know if it's friendly or not, but I'm gonna put it out. Um, and my amendment, uh, is that basically everything here holds, uh, except that I would like to work with the infrastructure and technology committee to reduce the net cost of the committee's goals by twenty-five percent, or approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Um.
Actually, at this point, that number would be smaller because it was, because the number is smaller because of the, uh, um, the bond cost change.
Okay.
You said one eighty, I think that was closer to, if it's a fourth.
Well, what would it be, favorite, what if fixed?
Just by, just, if you, please leave it at one-fourth.
Okay, one-fourth, that sounds fine, okay?
But does Maryam have to speak to when she's asking about the amendment?
Yeah.
Well, she's proposing it as a, she's asking if it's friendly, if it's not, then it's just gonna, then it's just a amendment.
Am I supposed to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, you made the amendment.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
So, you're.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Okay, um, so that was the first thing, um, then I would like to suggest that we reduce the curriculum and staff training budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, I would not say what curriculum and staff training we need to reduce, but I think we need to pull it in line. We do a lot of, of professional development for our teachers, we've done a lot in diversity and equity, maybe that's what we keep and we pull back on other things, but I think we need to look at that not as a good thing, but as something that in essence doesn't directly affect our kids.
Point of order.
Ben.
Yep.
Are, are you making a, a friendly amendment to this, a line item amendment of what you're actually saying, or is your amendment ultimately changing that dollar figure and you're explaining what that is?
No.
Or is your amendment gonna read, you know, how is that, how is it supposed to be?
My amendment basically has two additional lines that go under there.
Yeah, it would change the base.
But if you wanna change the base sixty-six million.
Yes, I do wanna do that.
Yeah, that was, the question is, are you changing the base number?
Yes, I am changing the base number.
And that's, the mi- it's my understanding, the constituent, would be the motion, what you're saying now is your explanation behind whatever number you're posting up there, if I'm understanding is correct.
Okay, I, I can do it that way, and then it.
Just wasn't sure.
It could be in the same order as this, I could reduce the overall budget, and then my explanations would be sort of similar to, to that.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if what you were saying was actual text for the amendment, or you just explained the dollar figure.
Well, I thought it was text, but I think you're right, I think, I think the actual amendment is to reduce the overall amount, uh, by about a hundred and fifty, and a hundred and fifty is three hundred, um, yes, by three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I mean, that to me actually sounds like a straight am- amendment.
Is that a new amendment?
That would just be a straight amendment.
Is it? I'm asking to reduce the full amount by three hundred thousand dollars and to add to this sort of explanation piece, the direction that it would be to reduce the curriculum and staff budget, and to work with the infrastructure and technology committee to reduce the net cost. And then I have two additional things I'd like to do, but maybe that's, maybe I should ask, to be friendly so far.
If that's, if that's, I think that's a proposed amendment, 'cause it changes the actual dollar amount. I mean, I would, I don't know, I mean, I assume it's just to be.
It's up to you guys, if it's friendly or not. So, I am, I am reducing.
You're just proposing it as an amendment.
I'm reducing the actual amount by three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and, and.
She's pro, uh, she's, are you?
The amendment is to reduce the number by three hundred thousand dollars, and to achieve that, reduce curriculum, what, what is the, what is the section?
To reduce the, uh, ITC spending, net cost of the committee's goals by twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Or, or I could say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep, and then my, I also have reduced the curriculum and staff training budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's a motion that we need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Patrick. So, then, discussion of motion, you've been speaking to it effectively already.
Yep, um, I did wanna.
Wait, can I clarify what it is?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an amendment, it's a possible amendment to your motion, Meredith.
Okay.
And I, I also wanna add one more, um, one more aspect to this, and I, I guess I would ask for help of what, where it goes, but I want us to ask the superintendent or direct the superintendent to consider two things, the sale of the Murray Street property to generate two hundred thousand dollars for the district, and to institute voluntary user payments for school services, such as after-school programs, CCTA, transportation pa- passes, and co-curriculars.
I didn't hear that last word.
Yeah, I, okay, so, wait a second, what, what you just said was not in your amendment, but you are all.
I, I would, I would like it to be in the part of the amendment which is directing the superintendent to keep this in mind, and I'd like to put those two things down as things that should be different.
Point of order, we've already had a second. Yeah, 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 then, I've, yeah, I mean, there's a motion, it's, Meredith, I mean, sorry, Miriam, that has to wait.
Okay, all right, so that can wait, I'll come back to that, that's fine. All right, so then I guess that's my, my motion then, reducing the budget by three hundred thousand by looking at the two things I suggest. And I have a second.
And, and if it's helpful to expedite, I would consider those additional things friendly to the amendment, if you wanted to, we make a friendly amendment to your own amendment, which I don't know where, what, how far down the rabbit hole we are now.
Okay, um, I would do that.
Okay, let's, let's just, okay, so you, you say to consi, you'd also instruct the administration to.
To do the following two things, explore the sale of the Murray Street property in the hope of generating two hundred thousand dollars, and two, to institute voluntary user payments for school services, such as after-school programs, which I understand we're doing a little bit of in the summer school, CCTA, transportation passes, and co-curriculars. Therefore, parents who want to pay for their bus pass can pay for it.
Okay, so you asked for voluntary user, basically payment of user fees for services such as.
After-school programs, CCTA, transportation passes, and co-curriculars, to the extent that there's money for co-curriculars.
Okay. I guess, I, I would actually turn to Patrick, did you wanna speak?
I do wanna speak to it, and, and I, I, I wanted to bring it up for, um, a- a- and to me, maybe this is, I, my, my rationale might be slightly different than what, what Miriam has. Um, so, I feel like, I feel like we're like pitting Spanish versus magnets versus library, elementary versus high school, facilities versus curriculum, ELL versus, versus AP, and we don't have, all right, so I, I said in an email earlier this week, I wanna expand elementary foreign language, and whatever, you can agree with that, you can disagree with it, but the reason that I said that is because I don't, I, I, I believe that our vision of what these schools stand for is that we have this worldly, um, engaged student body, and I think that, that distinguishes us from other places. Um, that's my vision, but as a board and as a, and, and, and as a district, I don't think we have a clear vision of what our priorities are. And so, because of that, the way decisions have been made for this budget, um, have become extraordinarily fru- frustrating to me. So, you, let me, let me use a, a separate example. So, University of Vermont has set up these, uh, research spires, you can argue with whether or not they've picked the right thing or not, but this is a lens through which they're making their decisions. You gotta tie it to a research spire in order to get funded. Um, curriculum was, we, we were told in our, in our committees that we give our priorities, and that then our priorities are going to be reflected, all right? Our number one, our, our, our number one priority was looking at ways to, to integrate, to differentiate, um, through professional development into the classroom, so that, that would touch on, um, it would touch on diversity, it would tou- touch on equity, it would touch on, um, um, the, the high achievers, it would touch on ELL, it would touch on inclusion, all of those things, that's what we wanted. Number four was looking at the one-to-one technology initiative. I find out tonight that we've just taken twenty thousand dollars out of, of a, a position for a social studies coach, which would've been right with curriculum's number one budget priority, well ahead of what was our one-to-one priority. So, I don't know how these decisions are being made, and without having a, a, a lens through which to determine these, and this is our responsibility as a board to say, what do we stand for, and once we've decided what it is that we stand for, then we can pass a budget. But until we decide what we stand for, we've gotta make sure that everything that we're doing goes directly to, 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 to touch on students, and I think what Miriam does, takes monies from other places that may not have direct impact, and in a tough budget year, puts them into, uh, direct, uh, contact with student, uh, in the classroom.
Well, I have a question, but weren't you wanting to decrease the budget, so it actually wouldn't take it and put it in the classroom? Isn't that what you were trying to do?
No, that's correct, that's correct, so I, I am decreasing the overall budget.
The overall budget, but not looking at what's, but, but to the effect of, of, um, but not touching the direct services to students.
Well.
Erin, then Liz.
I still remember if we added in the, um, the per, the two, the two bottom line ones, the CCTA bus, did we add them in?
We did add them in, yes.
So, I feel like the, so, so, the, oh, God, I can't talk, I'm sorry. Oh, so the, um, what we would do about CPTA buses, are you saying you would take the, take that service away from kids, or those who can pay for a pass, who will get this?
No, 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 no. No, no, I'm saying that we would pr- continue to provide it, but we would let parents know that the cost of a bus pass per, per child that the district pays is forty dollars, and if you would like to send forty dollars to the district to cover your child's bus pass, you may do that.
Same with after-school programs. My son just spent the last six weeks climbing at Petra Cliffs and had a great time. If he wanted to go to Petra Cliffs by himself for an hour, you know, just to climb for an hour, he's looking at fifteen bucks a pop. There's ninety dollars that, you know, that we were gifted, which is great, we had this conversation last year, we could've said, this program's gonna cost you ninety dollars. If you would like to, to defray some of that, you're welcome to, but not required to.
Okay, and I just, and what we had heard, though, from, um, Jeff about paying, was that it really wouldn't work out the way that we think it would work out in terms of having families send in money in envelopes, or even something to do with the accounting too, we had a report of that, that that really wouldn't work, am I right?
Right, as Jeff said, that it, it had been tried before, it generated very little amount of money for a lot of staff capacity and.
But, but I wanna point out that there's economies of scale here, and that if we're looking at not just the after-school program, if we're looking at various ways that our district in a, in a lovely way provides for all its students, but really in this economic climate, I think we can't, we're looking at a lot of different things, it might even be effective to put that in place, and after the first year, if it works, we might need to hire somebody to actually do that. So, I think this is a little bit more than what's been tried before, it's more like a policy shift, that we're no longer just gonna automatically do it. I'm sorry.
Ben, I'm sorry, Liz, and then Ben.
Um, I'm not clear if the friendly amendment, or was it amendment?
No, it's, this is a, this is a straight amendment list.
It's a new amendment, yeah, new thing.
Okay, so, can you clarify the process, please, the?
We vote on the amendment.
We vote on the amendment, and if the amendment, if this particular amendment, which is the two cuts.
Yep.
And directing them to look into these rev- possible revenues, if this passes, it will become part of the full motion, if it doesn't pass, then the.
It reverts to your motion.
Reverts to the existing motion.
Okay, so, um, I, I'm not decided, um, on what I think, um, but these are my concerns. One is that, um, we've got the Common Core, as I understand it, coming next year, and the curriculum, um, professional development is to train teachers to teach the Common Core, so unless you have some other information, I would be really concerned that, um, that actually is cutting kids, um, directly, because teachers have to learn how to use the Common Core. So, um, I, um, thought that, you know, professional services budget-wide, you know, is a three million dollar cost, I don't know if there's any other places within professional services as a budget category to cut, but, um, I could not support curriculum staff training cuts because of Common Core, I think that's too risky. And then, um, on the ITC thing, I will say that, um, the kids, well, maybe Xander and Henry could speak to this, I mean, what would it be like to be a senior and not get a laptop, would that, you know, what would that experience be like in, in the classroom, especially if you were from a family that didn't have anything at home?
I mean, from what I've heard from my senior friends who, who, um, are, are friends who are going to be seniors next year, uh, who come from, I think, a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds, is that, uh, I've heard, the, the two things I've heard really is, I don't want it, um, why, why would I need this, um, and that's really cool, I don't think we'll use it in classrooms, um, because I, I, because of the fact that senior teachers have not had any professional de- development, they haven't had any training, there's been no, I think, united front to get senior teachers to, to use iPads in a, in a way in their classroom that wouldn't just be, okay, we now have access to kind of laptops that you can carry around with you, um, so, I mean, in terms of, would it be a loss to instruction, I, I have to honestly say no.
Yeah, have you actually written it, had your hand?
Yeah, um, I don't really know, I'll be out of school next year, uh, I think, and I also don't even know how much money that would save, I think, I don't, I don't, I don't know how much the iPads cost, but, um, it might be a pretty small level thing, maybe that's what we're looking at, uh, uh, right now, but I think it's more like having it cross the board establishing that if we have all the students on the same page, it gives teachers more flexibility, maybe, I don't know. But I guess my, I, first, a clarifying question, and then something else to get to, which would be, my understanding of the motion is that the three hundred thousand dollars we're taking away is taken away from the budget, this is, which I think has been said, and it's not gonna be redistributed, however, the hundred thousand dollars up there is going to be redistributed back into other parts of the budget.
Yes.
That is correct.
That's true.
Okay.
So, can I, I'm, sorry.
And then, yeah, I have a second thing about the professional development, which I think, um, a hundred and fifty K from professional development, um, I don't know, I don't think it's the right place to take money from. I think that, you know, professional development is where you make, you know, you make teachers that are good, great, it's where you allow teachers to dwell, is where I think we allow to see some of the amazing, um, kind of cross-disciplinary events that come through in the schools, I think that, you know, it's honestly, I think it's where we wanna be going, the Common Core's coming, as Liz said, um, I, I don't know, I think it, it will allow us for, you know, if we were talking about, you know, I think there's talk of like classes at high school possibly being detracted in ninth grade in the coming future, um, like differentiated instructions, like these are skills will be taught to teachers through professional development, I think that like, that is a pretty direct cut to students, that's gonna impact the quality of teaching they're receiving.
So, I didn't mean to hand the floor over, I just wanted to kind of extend the opportunity to understand the experience. My concern with ITC is that, um, if we don't absorb part of that federal cut this year, then we lose the opportunity to get it next year, and because teachers of seniors aren't trained yet, I'm very worried that we will backslide, um, in the ITC effort. I feel like the ITC is a prior board decision, I can't question it, it, wheels were set in motion a long time ago, and I know for a fact that like, my son can't even do his Spanish homework because there's not enough Spanish textbooks for the seventh, eighth graders at Hunt, and they just got Chromebooks, which they can't bring home, so the teacher has to photocopy the Spanish textbook so mu- so the kids can do their Spanish homework, because they haven't been trained yet. So, I don't wanna take money out of the ITC, even if I don't like it, it's already so far inst- into the institution that the se- teachers for seniors need to be trained. I think it's an equity issue for kids who don't have a computer at home, then they'll have, they'll go from being a junior with a laptop to being a senior with nothing, getting, trying to get ready for college. And, you know, I, I think it's too bad that there's inadequate money to train, but that's the weakness, is in the training, and we'll backslide, we'll just have to absorb that money twice as much next year, that's the way the grant is set up. So, if we don't absorb it this year, we'll lose it, and we'll have to go double next year, so I guess I'm kinda talking to myself out of supporting this.
Xander.
Um, I'm gonna, I, I've had a sentiment kind of floating around for a little bit, and I'm gonna try and put some, some words to it, and I, I may backtrack and fix some things, but, um, I guess I, there's a part of me that's begin, beginning to, to feel a little bit of concern over this real prioritization of, um, direct student services and like teacher-student interaction in the classroom, and really highlighting that as like, we, this is the thing we need to direct our money to, um, and really highlighting that as like, we, this is the thing we need to direct our money to, um, as being the most important, uh, thing that affects students. And, um, I know that that's been, um, brought forward as a priority, um, but I, I, my concern with that is, we feel like it's really effective, and it's the most important thing because it's what we see. There's a lot, I think, that goes on to behind the scenes that is a lo- a lot harder to, to look at and to see, and like point out as, this is something that directly affects our students because it isn't in the classroom, we can measure the time that's being taken away in the programs that are being taken away. Um, whereas there's some other stuff that lives a little bit more abstractly in terms of, um, professional development with teachers. Uh, teachers get professional development and therefore can have better classroom experiences. And I, it almost looks like, um, months ago, when Henry and I did a student survey of where, where did students wanna see budget priorities, we saw an enormous response of students who wanted to see increases towards the budget in the building and the food, which was the most accessible thing that students could pick out as something to increase. And I think that, that just shows that people pick up the things that they can see, and that they can, they can really easily point out as like, this is, this is directly, I can, I can understand this, I can see it in its entirety. And so there's less of a focus on the stuff that also are, are direct impacts, and losing funding to some of it would directly impact students, but in a, in a much less easier unders- to, to understand way, and, and it may not be immediate, and it may not be, um, direct instruction, but I do think that it does, there are things that directly affect students that aren't, that isn't just classroom instruction and, um, programs. And I guess that's just what's been floating around in my head in terms of, we, we're prioritizing this, but I do think it's important to keep in mind the fact that we're, we're in a school district, and you can't throw a stone without hitting something that will eventually directly affect students. Um, and I guess, I just wanna throw out that, that out there as something to, to keep in mind.
Erin, Greg, and then Erin, Greg, and then Meredith.
Um, just to, and, and just to talk about, as, as a new teacher, um, professional development has been key in, in helping me transition into a classroom that I'm trying new things, I'm implementing the Common Core, I'm trying, and that's all because of working with my colleagues and learning things that didn't serve us day. Um, and so I, again, I, that would be one reason why I couldn't support that, is because I really do believe in that professional development. And as we see older teachers starting to retire, and younger, cheaper teachers coming in, I think we need to be educating these younger teachers, like myself, who's kind of foolish about things, and the place to do that is during this professional development days, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, because of the time, and because of the fact that we're really going down the rabbit hole here, and we're doing exactly what everybody had said we don't want to do with this budget, um, I move to lay the pending motion on the table.
Wait, what's that?
No, I need a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Say the motion again, please.
Um, because of the time, and because of the fact that we're going down the rabbit hole in doing exactly what we had decided we were not going to do, I move to lay the pending motion on the table, which means it does have to be brought up at our next meeting, but whenever that would be.
The motion being Meredith's motion?
This, this motion right here, because the amendment.
No, no, the motion is the amendment that's being ta- that Greg is asking to table, um, which is Miriam's, and then it's been seconded by.
No, no, Mr. Chair, I am asking for that right there to be tabled, because that, you're right, you're right.
Unfortunately, we're, we're, the discussion is on amendment amendment.
The amendment didn't get, you're right.
Right, we have to vote on that.
Um, then I'll make it on the amendment, if I may.
You're making it on amendment, and?
And I'm gonna second.
You, you second that. And, and just, you know, if this is, well, I guess, you know, kind of point of order, if, if we table this amendment, I just would like to point, sorry, if we table this amendment, and you, I would have to look through this, but if you're tabling an amendment, um, so you're postponing it for consideration, and we go back and take action on the main motion, um.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw that, ju- but it goes to my point.
You can call the question.
Call the question.
It, it goes, goes to my point, that it's getting late, and I just fear, we're all getting tired.
Meredith, Ben Keith.
I don't wanna make bad decisions.
I'd like to call the question.
So Meredith has called the question, which had been seconded, this is not open for debate, but it's a vote.
Second.
And it's on this.
And it's a two thirds vote. Calling the question would then immediately have us vote on this amend- on this amendment.
On Miriam's.
On Miriam's amendment.
Okay.
So, all in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, so the mo- so the call, the question has been called, so now, the amendment on the table is Miriam's amendment, which I, I would like to have reread, but, um, could you reread this amendment, please? Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to reduce the number, um, by, to reduce the number, um, by three hundred thousand to achieve the re- to achieve that result by hoping to reduce ITC spending by a hundred and fifty thousand, and reduce the curriculum and staff training budget by a hundred and fifty thousand, and to add to instructions to the superintendent to explore the sale of the Maristree property to generate two hundred thousand dollars, and to institute voluntary school payments for use of school services, including after school services, CTA, and co-curriculars.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay, so that's two to eleven, with both students voting against the motion. We are back to the original motion for the budget that was, that had, that is basically up on the, on the wall right now. Um, Meredith, you have spoken to this, I, if anybody who hasn't spoken, I would like to call, I mean.
I'd like to call the question.
Once again, this question's been called, once again, the process is, uh, a call needs a second, right?
Oh, second, yep.
And then we now have a two thirds vote. All in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed to calling the question, raise your hand, which is seven and two students. So the motion is still open for debate. Rebecca, I think you were about to have your hand up.
Well, the timing of this was just hard, 'cause I felt like there was this clarity to us to not ask questions when the presentation happened, and then all of a sudden we had the motion. So now I would like to ask a couple of questions. And I'm trying to not get into the weeds and go line by line, but I have two broad questions. One, we heard a number of people speak to not cutting magnet coaches, and, uh, at both magnet schools. Can you speak to whether those items are fr- are on this budget remaining, or are those cuts?
They are not. I believe that, um, my understanding is that, that advocacy came out in response to other parents suggesting it, but they are not.
May I ask one other question?
Yeah, yes, you start the phone.
We learned when the forty five minutes planning time was instituted, a couple of years ago now, the domino effect.
Mm-hmm.
And a couple of people spoke to the potential domino effect of Spanish being cut, particularly at two schools, and what the impact might be on music, and the whole schedule as a whole. Spanish is gone in this budget, and I wonder what the potential.
There is a concern at our two eighteen classroom schools that we would need to, uh, potentially, um, increase perhaps some other classes in order to accommodate the forty five minute prep. There are four Spanish positions. I put three in here to allow me to use the fourth position as necessary to meet those prep needs. May or may not be Spanish, could be, could not, you know, but it, so there are four FTEs currently in our Spanish program, case six, one six. I reduced three.
Okay.
That leaves a position that could be utilized, and it may not be utilized as Spanish. It could be increased music, it could be, but it allows us to accommodate those eighteen classroom schools where it would be very tight.
So do we have some level of confirmation that Spanish being removed is not taking away from academic time or special time?
Um, there.
Because I think it would be an awful big mistake for us to lose Spanish as a, what could be a pretty terrific enrichment experience, and filling it with something that is even less valuable.
I cannot guarantee for you that other things will not be affected. It would be an effect. I cannot quantify for you tonight, the conversations we've had administratively, um, do not put it on paper, but we have raised the concerns that in our eighteen classroom schools, we may need some additional staffing to make sure that we continue. Everybody would continue to get the required amount of services. We offer more than required amounts of services, and music, um, in particular. Um, that, that still has to play out. And, and I saved a position in order to protect that to play out.
Will, is one position of Spanish enough to cover those two eighteen?
Again, it may not be Spanish, so it's a position.
Well, hypothetically.
For example, we could, um, choose to increase art in those two schools. We could choose to add a little bit of PE teacher, a little bit of music teacher, a little bit of art teacher, to make sure that we have sections to cover it, okay? Or it could be Spanish, that right now, both of those schools only have a half time Spanish teacher as it is.
And there's enough flexibility in the other four elementary schools so that without Spanish, something else?
It's not as tight, right. It would most likely affect library services. In the sense that library, um, librarians would need to be part of the rotation, which they are in some schools and not in other schools, for, um, meeting the need of prep time.
Which is doubly difficult since we just cut library paras in half. So we're asking librarians to do more in four elementary schools, which, yes.
Okay, that, Henry, and then Ben.
So, um, I know it's getting late, but I think that, and I know that the later it gets, the more likely we are to make a bad decision, but I think the worst thing we can do would be to, like, call it the question now, and pass a budget that we don't have confidence in as a full board, or that we don't have all our questions answered. Um, and I'm pretty sure we have to pass one tonight, is that correct?
No.
No.
No, I think, no, we could call it, we could ask for a reset, basically.
I mean, you can go, yeah, I mean, I think the final date is January nineteenth.
Hi, and then I guess, the second thing is, um, I would, I would support, if we were looking to save more money, I would support the, um, a hundred and fifty thousand out of ITC. Um, and I didn't hear much opposition to that around the board. People who spoke seemed to be opposed to the curriculum part, um, mainly, so just throwing that out there.
Ben?
I'll hold from you.
Okay, Meredith.
Oh, was that, okay, I'll say that I oppose that, so there you go. I didn't speak to it earlier, and part of, you know, part of why I actually, well, I probably can't speak to it, right? He brought it up, so I, okay.
Yeah, I'm focused.
Just, just, just really quick.
Yeah, Erin.
So if we pass, with the hundred thousand dollars in savings, could possibly be put back into library? If that's where the need would be.
You would need a hundred and twenty, right.
Okay.
To put back in the library.
I, I, I just, I haven't said anything against debate, and I, I, um, I wanted to say a couple of things. First is that with the, the relooks at how we put money, numbers into the general fund expenditures, and how they play through, the fact is, as we roll forward our budget from last year, the actual, um, marginal cost of rolling that budget forward from last year, once we've put apples in play, apples to apples, as well as seeing that we are not double counting the cost of the instruction by also the tuition that goes over to the alternative programs, I look at a budget that's been, that's being rolled forward, that um, is much more in line with my thinking of where, when last year we said we were gonna put three to five year goals in place. It still would require a pretty tight budget, it will require a pretty tight budget next year, um, to keep a three year goal in place that would not be more than a percent and a half above cost of living. Given that, I ca- I came here in general thinking that I was not in a position to think that this was from the budget that I assumed was going to be proposed, the best budget to put forward to the voters, uh, in March. And yet, I see now a, a budget because of these corrections, where the level, I know there's a big increase coming from the state, but as I see that, and in particu- and I see that in that the overall, there is of a three percent per pupil spending increase, um, is where this is with the budget we have been discussing, with the budget that we put out for public comment, that those pieces together put me in a position where I will support this. Once again, it's not perfect, there is some, you know, we, we did change some pro- we, there are some process things that we've done tonight that I think have been not to the hap- to the liking of some people. Um, and on the other hand, I think that this process tonight allowed us actually to debate a couple of points, that while the administration may have already had an implicit prioritization that they provided us with, the board discussed some of them as well. And once again, I'll say, I realize it's a process, but again, a process that can't be changed, I don't think is, or even discussed about being changed, is not necessarily, um, the best way to go either. So, well, it's been a bit, there've been a few frustrations for everybody tonight, I think. I'm just, that's just where I come in, in this, and I just wanna state that as an overall view of the budget, I'm done. Ben?
Try to be brief, I'm not as, I'm less coherent than I usually am, so I'll try to keep quiet. Not just as, uh, like a sycophant, but I wanna express my appreciation for the effort that's gone into this. Because god knows I couldn't do it, and I recognize the tremendous amount of effort that has to go into it by, you know, across the board, not just you guys, but throughout the district. And I'm looking at this as a, it's Burlington, most livable city. And part of our argument to the city is, that includes really good schools. Um, and it's sort of, the similar thing with, with the budget is, with this motion as it's been proposed now, still recognizing that what goes into really good schools is more than just the classroom experience. And I think that as a whole, we're making some very difficult decisions on the administrative level, in the specific classroom and instructions. Um, and all of it ends up in what's happening with the kids. So I think sometimes the public debate gets a little disconnected in thinking that if you're doing this, you, you're impacting kids. If you're doing this, you're not impacting kids. It all impacts kids in some way. I, at this point, I'm supportive of this motion, but I do recognize that there's a lot of different parts that make this a whole machine. The frustration I've had with the whole process is, you know, the general model that we've got is a board, and this is only my third year, and I feel like I'm still just cutting up the speed. Um, you know, if we had a legislative model, I was mentioning, I think maybe to you last week, where there was the appropriations committee, and you met every single day, so you can go over the budget line by line with the administration, with the program staff, et cetera, and you can get into it. You know, that's one thing. We're not capable of doing that, so we have to find some other way. And this was one way, and it's not really working well, so we'll find a way. Um, and I'm, I'm willing to continue the, the, our journey to, uh, find that way. Um, and I think we're doing okay, and I think what we're presenting to the public is a decent budget that meets our goals and the administration's goals, to give our kids the best education we can give them under the current economic circumstances. I, that said, I did have one thing, and I don't know if it's like a motion, for example, my personal preference, and I might wanna make it a motion, but I'm not sure how yet, is to add, will possibly, uh, add more to the library paras. Um, and the only place I'm seeing really to do that is the seventy five K custodial. So I'm interested to know if I propose that or something. One, is that makes sense? I don't necessarily wanna light item something like that, but I'd like to see the impact, I'd like to know the impact.
If you added a hundred and twenty thousand custodians, I mean, a hundred and twenty thousand fair education.
I, you asked me what the. No, I'm asking if I cut a custodial position for seventy five thousand dollars and move that into, into the.
We're funding it, yeah, we requested two custodians, they both fit.
There, we requested two custodians, they both fit in on the park. Um, a place in I T C for any that you might consider going is fifty thousand out of um the funding money.
It's still listed on the.
Sorry, it looks, when I'm looking at uh the the budget draft on page two of two, increased custodial maintenance needs, it says seventy-five thousand.
That was a change, and it says under draft four zero.
Give me just a second to catch up again.
Too many papers.
See, look under draft four, you see the number is zero.
Well, I'm looking at this.
You're on draft five.
Yeah. And it's right here.
I said you're on draft five, which is tight, so I don't know.
That's that's not, that's not specific in a custodial position, that could be a custodial position.
Oh, that was, so, so in in facilities, they asked for two custodial positions and three hundred thousand dollars in non-personnel related maintenance increases because of keeping up with the cost of living. Out of all of that, what was left in the budget was just seventy-five thousand in the non-personnel related increase in costs. So it's not a custodial position, there there is no increase in custodial position.
Okay. So, well, so here's seventy-five thousand dollars, what is it for then?
It's for the non-personnel related facilities costs, supplies, fuel.
Light bulbs.
Light bulbs.
Toilet.
Toilet.
Toilet, toilet paper.
We always.
So, okay, so I understand, so then, what is the, what is the impact of removing that dollar figures, I mean, there's no toilet paper or just the some, every other stall?
It was already. The impact is. Yes, that would be, or every other light bulb, I mean, we are in that line.
I mean, I'm making a little light of it, but if I'm trying to decide whether to put that into a library paras, what am I losing there?
Right. You're, you are, we will potentially run a deficit in that line because it really reflects one-fourth of the cost of living increases that we anticipated based upon last year's budget and where we are this year. Again, I think you might look at fifty thousand in planning.
You know, having, having knowledge of three submissions for three, three R F P responses.
Point of order. Um, are we line item like adjusting the budget right now?
All right.
Sounds like it.
We are.
This is what we're trying to do in the motion, is give the superintendent flexibility. So, and we're saying we trust you.
Okay. Okay, let me, Liz, Ben's still got the floor then.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ben.
Your point is well taken, Liz, and I I appreciate that. I think then I'll ask the administration to take my questions as my preference of a- adding that to the other voices. Of as we continue to finesse the budget and find savings, and if it turns out, oh, look, we came in under budget on planning for the school, wouldn't this be a swell place to put it, back in the library paras, my personal preference. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mine too.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
Um, within here is two hundred thousand dollars of pets in the high school that are not even yet talked about. I just don't want that lost, so it doesn't come back in March with, but I didn't realize that as you're analyzing high school course loans, that that will change.
Meredith and I, Bernie.
I just want to say the library services issue came up in finance, and I think there are quite a few board members who share your opinion. So, I wouldn't, you know, I think Jeannie's heard that again and again. But we, I think, we also recognize, going back to last Monday, that um when he said this is a compromise for everyone, this budget, that's kind of what it is, you know, it's not a perfect scenario, and we have done the best we could, I think, in this motion to reflect um not going after specific line items necessarily, or or general overall um budgetary goals, which are reflected in the PowerPoint, but instead saying, okay, focus on, take your focus a little bit more off the classroom and focus on administrative, so, I'm.
Bernie?
Uh, just like comment, this is Finance Committee four years, and to compare the information we get now as to what we are getting for even six years ago, i- it's it's mind boggling. And and part of that is the accounting system, but part of it is also David.
Yeah, in a good way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was like, whoa.
Just the information and how we get it uh in the committee is, it's, there's just been a world of difference from what we had in the past. I just want to acknowledge it. And also ask everybody to, this is going to be a tough budget, so it's just, there's, it's better now because of what we're doing tonight, but uh you know, there there's, there wasn't a lot of support last night at City Council, and um it's, I mean, everybody's really going to have to work hard to get this through. As we always do.
Any more discussion of the amendment?
Ben? One last thing, one, thank you Finance Committee, two. I want to say on the Spanish part, because I know it's difficult when something goes away for it to come back, that because of the conversations we had, so much about the curriculum aspect that was, you know, a better curriculum for it, and I'm going to ask and hope that we can take that up in curriculum to start working on a program, to find what the weaknesses were in the Spanish program, so that if there is an opportunity to reintroduce it next year or in out years, that we have something to, worth fighting for. Thank you.
Any more discussion to the, yes, Meredith?
I'd like to ask a question, I I would like somebody to address the issue, th- this would be very helpful for me. Um, I I'm not trying to prolong the discussion, but for someone to address the issue of the increase in taxes. And to, oh, just to help me to get over the fact that I am having trouble putting out another budget that is gonna ask people who can't afford it to pay more, and I'm not saying, I I I'm asking for help here, I'm not saying this in a critical way. I'm just wondering if someone can elucidate or just eloquently say why this makes sense, and I, this would be very helpful for me in me making my decision about where I stand.
Keith?
I've been knocking on doors for many years, asking people, I I've been knocking on doors for many years, asking people to to vote for our budget. I mean, I, that's what I do in more than one. And a lot of them tell me it's too much. My first response is, then please tell me by voting no. If it's, if you cannot afford it, you need to vote no, and don't feel guilty about that. I think we just have to be honest, we're doing the best we can for for our community students. But if somebody can't afford it, then they should feel, they should, they should tell us. And I, I, when, when they, when I say that to them, it opens up a whole new conversation. And oftentimes they come back and say, I figured out how I can do it. But if you are honest, they, and if they're willing to support it, they will do it. Sometimes, being able to do it is not necessarily a question, it's willingness, it's not always the ability to afford it, it's a willingness. And you have an honest conversation about what, what our schools are doing for for our children in the future, and the city of Burlington, the economic vitality, all of those kind of topics, people will appreciate that conversation.
Linda?
One other thing I think we need to think about is that we are a livable community, we need not get hit from the, from the uh real estate bust that a lot of other people did, our housing co- um costs stayed relatively stable. Part of that is because we have good schools. And I look at, and I'm, I don't know, I'm not the only one here that's on a fixed income, but I'm on a very fixed income. And basically, I look at it and say, if I put money into my house, that's a good thing, it, I'll reap the benefits when I sell it. If I put money into the schools, that keeps the property values up, and that also helps. So I think it is, it is a matter of priorities, it's also, as as Keith said, a matter of how do you sell it? But I would rather put money into good schools than I would into putting money into prisons, I'm sure as heck are spending a lot in prisons right now, so.
Any other discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion on the table?
That, just that motion.
This motion on the table?
Just that.
This motion on the table?
It's a, I just making sure.
No, that's, that's fine, and um, we should read, yeah, I know, my contacts are cl- clouding up and everything like that.
Sorry, keep your eyes open.
But uh, the motion that's on the table, which can be read in full, and I could read it out loud, I suppose, but, um, all in favor, please raise your hand.
That's all.
All opposed? So the vote was twelve to one with the two students voting for this amendment as, uh, for this motion as well. Um, I guess, I, I mean, I. What I'll say here is, we're still in the Finance Committee, uh, we're still in the Finance Committee report, and I guess I would ask for brevity as as much as we can for the rest of the.
Basically, usually the next two motions are pro forma, we're required to have them done by the state by a certain time. The first, I'm going to move to approve the proposed tuition rates for fiscal fiscal uh two thousand fifteen. You have that, um, you have that document on your wor- board docs?
Is there a second by, a second by Kathy? Um, is there any discussion of this?
Call a question.
Seeing none, seeing none, all in favor of the B T C budget, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No, that was the, that was the tuition rates.
Those proposed tuition rates.
I'm sorry, those proposed tuition rates.
Okay, the next one is a motion to approve the uh the Burlington Technical Center fiscal fifteen budget um in the amount of two million seven hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars.
Seconded by Bernie. Any discussion of this motion?
The um, the budget, this is pretty much a pro forma um pro- um budget, they, goes by the state, uh, what the state requires. The budget is uh up less than one percent, point five eight percent, but, and the tuition rate is up seven percent. So the tuition rate, as we just adopted for the Burlington Technical Center, is sixteen thousand three hundred forty-five dollars.
Any further discussion?
Can someone just take one second and just tell me what what it is that we're just voting on, so.
You're voting on the Burlington Technical Center budget, you have the document?
And that's because we give money to the, we pay the tuition rate to them?
We pay, we pay, well, they have a budget.
Yes.
Okay, and every student that goes there, the the school district pays their tuition.
Yeah.
And half of the students that go to Burlington Technical Center are Burlington students.
Right.
So we pay about fifty percent of that. We also get back from their budget a certain amount, the state has a formula about a percentage for overhead costs for the co- price of superintendent, cost of superintendent, all the administrative costs, et cetera, and he, and we get that back.
It's the same cost per student?
Yes.
That same number that we use in our regular budget?
Right, whether they come from C V U or or Mount Mansfield or Colchester, they pay the same tuition rate as Burlington students.
Is it okay if David expands on what you said, Keith?
Okay.
The reason, the reason why this budget comes here is that this board is responsible for the budgets.
Right.
It's not, it's not approving what we're going to pay to them. We are responsible, you are responsible for the budget, it's part of your responsibility as the host district. And if I, I may have misunderstood what you were saying down there, uh, but um it didn't sound like the last thing you said either.
The tuition rate is not the same as the regular tuition rate.
That, that's the point, yeah, it's a different tuition rate.
Yeah.
So do we ever see this budget that we're responsible for, like, do we ever see a budget of what?
It's on, it's on board docs.
It's on board docs right now, it's been there.
Okay. And is that something that changes year to year, or?
It does.
So did we change it this year, or did, we don't?
It is prepared by the tech center, is brought to the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee reviews it, and and based on that review, it's coming to the full board.
Based only on the. Yeah.
So it's being reviewed by the Finance Committee.
And the change this year was because they're, they have reduced one, one teacher's retiring and the program that that teacher was teaching um doesn't have the enrollment, so they're stopping that enrollment.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Burlington Tech Center budget, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That also passes.
That was an easy budget.
Is, anything else, Keith?
No, nothing Finance.
Okay.
We do have, we have a lot of good minutes, you might want to want, read them, or we taught, we're starting our conversation of developing our relationship, our partnership with the city.
Okay.
And developing a conversation about a three to five year fiscal strategic plan.
Linda, Policy Advocacy Committee?
We have three policies to bring before the board. Um, the new numbering system, one is on reporting of child and vulnerable adult abuse, one is on prevention of harassment, and the third one is educational records. They're on board docs, this would be the second reading.
First reading of all three.
Oh, I'm sorry, the first reading of all three. Can I have a sec? Do we need a second on those?
Okay, yeah, um, and I think we should do them individually.
Okay.
So it's the first reading of D two?
D two, this is a new numbering system, so as they come on, they're going to come on, these are required, this one's not required, but the other two are required by the state. So it's D two, reporting of child and vulnerable adult abuse, sexual abuse, and sexual violence.
I would, so the motion's been made and seconded by Keith, um, I guess my question is, is there anything substantive in the change to this? I see some language change, but is any of this substantive?
I don't think so.
Yeah?
No. We changed the, slightly changed the wording, you can take a look at it, we're pulling out in all of these the procedures. So sometimes you're going to see stuff removed and it'll go into the procedures booklet rather than staying in policy.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, but basically, the basic underlying policy is the same.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion of this? All in favor of approving policy D two for first reading, say aye.
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 All opposed? And Keith, Linda?
Okay, policy D three R, are behind all of the policies, says that that's a state required policy. Again, we, they pulled out some stuff that's procedural, but other than that, changed a, a couple of things. It's been looked over by both the um lawyer for the s- um State Board of Education, uh, not the State Board of Education, the Vermont School Board, the School Board Association lawyer and our lawyer, and there's no real changes.
Kathy? Oh, there was a second, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, Kathy's seconding. Any other questions or discussion of this motion for, I'm sorry, this policy for first reading? All in favor of policy, which is now D three R for first reading, say aye.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Linda?
Okay, and the final one, policy is a policy on educational records, it's F one R, and there are no changes in it.
Any, a second from Kathy again? Any further que- any questions? Or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of policy F one R, do I have the, sorry, I was scrolling down, F one R, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so that's been approved for first reading. Anything else from Policy Committee, Linda?
One other thing to say, that we have a po- the next Policy Committee meeting, we will review the last five required policies from the s- from the state and have them all sent off to the lawyer.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Linda. Um, Patrick, Curriculum Committee, anything other than us reviewing what's, you're.
Yeah, I I I just want really literally one minute on this, and then, most of what we have is in the uh, is in the minutes, please read them, good meetings.
Yeah.
Um, two things, one, if you have any particular ideas about how the structure of committees and what the role of committees uh might be, we're going to bring that up uh, and sp- with, in relation to Curriculum Committee next Tuesday night. So if you have any ideas, we, please feel free to come and share them. The other thing is, one of the presentations that we had, um, brought people from the mayor's office, U V M, the schools, who had gone and worked in a New England regional um, uh, working with a bunch of mayors and cities from from across the New England region. And I think it provides a good model for us to consider, um, or information for us to consider in budget years going forward. And we really do not, w- I I I think we could better use the partnerships of the resources that exist in the community um, together to find efficiencies, to find expertise, um, and and. um, together to find efficiencies, to find expertise, um, and, and some of the ideas that were brought up there, I think, really provide, um, some ways for us to be much more efficient and intentional in the way that we structure, uh, our budget and structure some of our, uh, our positions. And I just wanna bring that as, as a continual thing as we move forward with budgets.
They had some good info.
Okay. Keith? Any questions for Patrick related to Curriculum Committee?
Just to clarify, so you're saying the Curriculum Committee is going to be looking at all the committees of the board?
No, we're looking at just the Curriculum Committee, but I'm guessing that other committees may be having some similar sort of questions.
I think it's a good idea. I just was thinking, why isn't the Planning Committee? But yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Bernie, Infrastructure?
The PowerPoint presentation.
Bring it on! I assume fifty, sixty slides?
No more than.
Okay. Any, any questions? Any comments?
No.
Read the, read the minutes?
Read the minutes. Well, read the, read the agenda, because there's items on the agenda.
Okay.
Catch the minutes, thanks, Mom.
Okay. Um, Rebecca? Diversity and Equity?
Uh, it was actually not a meeting I was at, but the minutes are there. It was a bit of a hodgepodge of people coming and going. I think, um, the, the agenda has reports, and the Equity Inclusion Report Advisory Committee is up and running.
Okay. Thank you. That is the last, Planning Committee did not need to have a new Planning Committee to have the board meet. Aaron? Motion to adjourn. Linda seconds. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes, it's your chance.